And motion and Councilman. Clough, sorry Dan, Councilman Clough, he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Grateful for the beautiful weather, the wonderful place in which we live and the city in which people are committed and caring. We ask a blessing, Father, on this meeting as we deliberate on a number of items that affect people, that we might be wise, that we might be even-handed, that we might be understanding of what the issues are, that we might be guided in our decisions, that we do the best for the city. We're grateful for our families and all those whom we love and know. We do ask, Father, a blessing on this meeting in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Move on to item one, approval of the agenda as outlined.
So moved.
Motion for an approval?
Seconded.
Motion and second?
Correct, aye.
Granger, aye.
Clough, aye.
Ward, aye.
Thank you. Announcements, I do need to excuse Councilman Bellston, who is out of town, playing, I think. Sorry, we can play. Item three, declaration of extensions and conflicts, anything to declare from the council at this time on any of the items? If not, we'll move on to our consent agenda to approve the minutes for the city council meetings of nine twenty-six, ten-nine, and ten-ten eighteen. And, or excuse me, and the final plats. I need to read through those? Okay, I'll read through. Final plats have first consideration to approve the final plat for Arroyo, Sienna Hills, phase four, located approximately Sage Crest Circle and Sandy Tallors Drive, Brennan Holdings. Item two, consideration to approve the final plat for Villas at Greenspring, phase two, located approximately Greenspring Drive, Washington Parkway, again Brennan Holdings. Item three, consideration to approve the Villas at Greenspring, phase three, located approximately Greenspring Drive and Washington Parkway, same applicant.
I move approval of the consent agenda as reiterated by the mayor.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second?
So I had a question on there. So we, after we changed this to the consent agenda and put the final plats on there, I haven't had any concerns with them up until now. But I do have a, so first my question is, on, on the documentation I received in there, I could not tell the difference between, it looked like the same, the same plot for both item two and three, as far as phase, I couldn't tell the difference which one was phase two and which one was phase three. But I, I don't agree with the changes that were made there, and I'd like, I voted against it before, I'd like to continue to vote against it. So on a consent agenda, how does that work?
I think you would just vote against some of the items.
And so then my other question is, which item is it? Because I, on the, on the documentation, I couldn't tell which one was the one that, that modified the, was it four plots? Is it both of, is there?
So he would vote against the whole consent agenda?
Correct.
Okay. Councilman Ward?
Well, not the minutes.
Not the minutes, but?
Well, not the minutes and then not?
Yeah, so what can happen is he can request for it to be pulled out of the consent agenda, it have to be seconded and motioned on, and then you can just take a vote on that.
Clicked on the regular agenda.
Yeah, right now, doesn't need to wait two weeks.
If you want to, if you want to modify your, uh?
Okay.
Motion or I can make it?
I move that we approve the portion of the consent agenda that has to do with the approval of the minutes.
And item four, item one?
Item one of final plat.
Thank you.
I'll modify my second.
Okay, I've got a modified, for motion and a modified second?
Correct, aye.
Granger, aye.
Clough, aye.
Ward, aye.
And then we move to approve the final plats?
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the final plats, two and three.
Mayor, I'll make the motion that we approve the final plats for the Villas at Greenspring's phase two and also phase three.
Second?
Motion and a second?
Ward, nay. Clough, aye.
Are we going to have a discussion before we vote on this?
You can, you can.
Well, I think the only discussion, he didn't like the change, so it doesn't?
This was the final plat, sorry, been, I mean, the preliminary plat was approved.
I was just going to point out, phase two had lot five forty-eight in it that was modified.
Right.
And then phase three is the wider, it had lots, uh, five twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, just for clarification on, there was the three lots you added in phase three, or a total of four on that preliminary plat.
Okay, okay.
Which I, I appreciate Councilman Ward, as he had concerns with that through the approval process, and voted against it. So I certainly can appreciate where he stands here on this one, but I would vote aye.
I'm still on aye.
I'm still on aye.
You already voted nay.
Yes, yeah.
So that passes three to one. Thank you. Item five, subdivision name change, consideration to change the name of a subdivision from Sunwood at Belavista to Lava Fields and Lava Ridge, located approximately Belavista Drive, applicant Steve Holcroft.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, the applicant's wishing to change the name, it used to be uh, Sunwood at Belavista. Basically, I'm not sure why they brought in the other name, we're just basically changing, this is the only one that's been given a, an approval, is this particular phase one here. So the name will be going from Sunwood at Belavista Phase One, now wishing to be called Lava Fields Phase One. Still at the same location, of course, with the same findings, same conditions, it's just it's a name change. And because the name was associated or given in that preliminary plat approval, vesting was given, we got to come through this process and amend the preliminary plat only to change the name.
Where does the name Lava Ridge fit into that? It says to Lava Fields and Lava Ridge.
Yeah, but again, the applicant brought it in, they're changing, they're going to change the names of all the PUDs that they, they've, you've approved.
Yeah.
The other ones can come in with their new name, because they were never really given a name.
So we're only approving that one change?
You're just approving, yeah, because Lava Field is an approved preliminary plat, that's the only one we need to change tonight. And I just showed the plat, you know, that's what's in. And so they, they are going to change the, the homes that are up against the field, the, the single family. And a few others will, will have a name, but you'll see that when they bring them in for their preliminary plat. So tonight, we're just changing the name on this particular approved preliminary plat to Lava Fields Phase One.
There was a question, I don't, I don't suppose the applicant is here?
I'll be surprised if they're, I guess I'm surprised.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not here tonight.
Well, so we just, just received an email about the technicalities of this. This doesn't change any of the, any of the conditions that were put on it, this is, this strictly is just a name change, doesn't, technicality, basically, unless you live there and you have to call it something different, I guess.
Like I say, I put on the original findings, the original conditions, we stated that in the planning commission meetings, so absolutely, that, you know, the short answer to that is nothing, it's still under the original findings, original conditions.
Yeah.
And that's part of the motion that I've, I've put in your report, that none of those have changed.
Thank you.
They'll still be tied to the PUD, all those things will be, it's just the name is being changed, is all.
So just as a point of clarification for me, is if someone comes in and changes the name, is there anything else that comes with that? Change, is there anything other than really just the marketing, pretty much, they just changed what's on the front board?
That basically says it, instead of saying green, it's now blue. That's, that's the, that's the only thing.
I agree with Councilman Ward, they've received enough emails that I was just really concerned that this isn't all of a sudden like, oh, well now they have a new name, we can now do whatever. So I, I just wanted to have that clarity.
If it was only that easy.
I know, right?
Everybody'd be doing it, but no, that's.
Well, just so you know, we get, the staff gets the same response from a developer and owner, says, I'm just changing the name, I have to come to a meeting to do it? But yeah, it's the same thing, and I have to make sure that folks know that, that it goes on that plat, recorded on that plat, so you do have to still come and get that approved by the city council. Nothing else, it does change. Both sides seem like, it seems like a much ado, really nothing's happening. That's probably more the problem.
I do appreciate the verification that all it really is through this process is just the name, because?
Yeah, so they're basically going from Adidas to Nike's.
Okay.
You know, and that's, that's just a look or a brand name, so.
I appreciate that clarification, because this is the first one that I've ever come across as a councilman, so I appreciate that, just making sure that's what it is.
That's all it is.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, a motion to approve the change of the name of the subdivision from Sunwood at Belavista to Lava Fields. The name's not phase two, that's just descriptive of Lava Fields, right?
Is there a typo in there?
No, they didn't say it here, but you said it was Lava Fields Phase Two.
I'm sorry, I, it's written phase one, it is just phase one.
I mean phase one, but we're not, that's not part of the title. Okay.
Well, it technically is, that's, that's part of, you know, when the final plat goes through, it's going to be Lava Fields Phase One.
All right, so from Sunwood to Lava Fields Phase One.
One.
Probably part of that motion would you redefine that all the standards and, from the original PUD, that way it's, it's all reinforced.
All right, and this does not change any of the original conditions or standards that have been with this property from the beginning with the PUD.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second?
Ward, aye. Clough, aye.
Granger, aye.
Correct, aye.
All right, thank you.
I'm, you know, Mayor, I'm waiting for somebody to name something Blue Clay Avenue.
Gypsum Way?
Blue Clay Alley.
That will be your legacy.
Overpriced and arrogant.
All right, item six, consideration to approve an amendment to the final plat for the eighth at Coral Canyon, located approximately Albatross Lane, Coral Canyon Boulevard. The purpose is to adjust the lot line along Coral Canyon Boulevard, applicant Colwest Homes.
I've kind of zoomed in on this particular area, you can see, it runs along lot, unit one, unit two, and unit three, that, that particular border is what's, what's before you tonight. It is simply to adjust that five point, or six point four, seven foot change there, and I'll explain why as I get into the report. So as stated, the applicant is wishing to amend the final plat of the eighth at Coral Canyon. This particular amendment is for adjusting a portion of the boundary at the corner of Coral Canyon Boulevard and the state highway nine on-ramp. A previous dedication of the Coral Canyon Boulevard was mislabeled, and when the eighth at Coral Canyon was platted, an overlap was found in the survey. This amendment is correcting the overlap in the legal descriptions between the right-of-way and the subdivision boundary. Staffs reviewed the proposal, finds the amended final plat to conform to the zoning at this particular area, which is Coral Canyon PCD. Subdivision is also still in conformance with the subdivision ordinance of the city, therefore staff recommended that the amendment be recommended for approval. The planning commission reviewed the request last week at their October seventeenth, two thousand eighteen meeting. Planning commission unanimously recommended approval of the amended final plat for the eighth at Coral Canyon subdivision onto the city council, with the findings and the conditions that are in your report now. During the planning commission meeting, we found, thank goodness we have a planning commissioner that works for Alliance, is it Alliance Craig worked for? And he knows the Coral Canyon area real well, because his company's done a lot of stuff in the original Coral Canyon area. And so he, he let us, reminded us, there is a sewer easement that runs out of the southwest portion of this, we just want to make sure it's still addressed and, and taken care of as recordings come. So that's a condition that, that the applicant will have to make sure that that sewer easement is, is taken care of. And that basically runs out, it either runs in between lots twenty and twenty-one, or would come out this particular area. I'm not sure where it is, we'll just make sure it's on the plat right, that that easement's taken care of to run that sewer down, and as it does head down toward the clubhouse at the, at the golf course, that direction. So be glad to answer any questions council might have on this amended final plat. But again, it's simply up here in the corner, um, when the Boulevard was dedicated, they dedicated a little bit more, because there is a, a right-hand turn to get onto the on-ramp there, and so it got pushed over a little bit, and what they thought was up here was already a road dedication, so when they went, they had this overlap, needed to adjust that. So we didn't overlap the boundary over the, over the right-of-way, so.
Any additional questions for Drew or for the applicant? Anybody ready to make a motion?
Mayor, if there's no further discussion, I make a motion to approve an amendment to the final plat for the eighth at Coral Canyon, located approximately Albatross Lane. Sorry, I make a motion to approve an amendment for the final plat for the eighth at Coral Canyon, located approximately Albatross Lane and Coral Canyon Boulevard. The purpose is to adjust the lot line along Coral Canyon Boulevard.
Do you want to add the sewer easement condition on that?
Does that, it's a condition already stated, I don't?
Six, six conditions there.
Okay, okay. I'll second that motion.
Can I have a motion and a second?
Correct, aye.
Granger, aye.
Clough, aye.
Ward, aye.
All right, thank you, that is approved. Move on to item seven, public hearing for consideration to approve zoning change request Z dash eighteen dash fifteen, to change the zoning designation from agriculture, agricultural twenty acre lot eight twenty to planned unit development residential, PUDR, zone request is located approximately eighteen hundred, excuse me, eighteen hundred South Washington Fields Road, applicant Nissen Fields LLC.
Thank you. Mayor has stated the applicant is requesting the PUD zone change for approximately forty-seven point four acres. The request to change is from the current zoning of agricultural twenty acre minimum and open space to a proposed planned unit development residential, mixed in with a planned unit development commercial. The PUDR request is for the purpose of developing thirty-two point two seven acres into a mix of single-family and multifamily residential dwelling units in the form of fifty-one single-family detached units, thirty-three family garden units. They'll, then basically those garden units mean that there's common area around the, so they'll own the footprint of the building, then all the property around will be in, in the form of common area. And then finally, there will be a proposal of one hundred townhome units. This will be a total of one hundred and eighty-four units throughout the residential designated area of the project, equalling, equalling a five point five dwelling unit per acre ratio. The PUDC request is for the purpose of developing three point five acres into a future commercial development at a later date. The applicant understands that proposing the design and the specific use of this area requires them to bring back a specific plan for approval through the public hearing process. The applicant also understands that they have eighteen months to do so, or that the pad itself will be zoned strictly just PUD, without a designation of the PUDC attached to it. The general plan land use designation for this area is low density residential, this carries a three to four dwelling unit per acre density ratio. There is also a ten acre portion designated as community commercial, actually should be, should be under the neighborhood.
So C?
Commercial.
C two?
Well, no, it's, it's a general plan designation. I may be overthinking myself. It actually was designated as neighborhood commercial, so it should be, I need to adjust that on my, on my report, it was neighborhood commercial, which is the N com designation in the general plan. The surrounding zoning of this parcel is R one ten and R one eight to the west, R one ten to the north, eight twenty and R one twelve to the south, and then finally R one twelve, RA half to the east. Staff has reviewed the requested zone change, wishes to point out three items of concern that stood out to staff. First, the public works has concern regarding the design of the private roads throughout the development. They are not in accordance to the approved private street designs accepted by the city. Secondly, the applicant is asking or seeking a change in the setbacks as stated in the PUD regulations. One in the form of front yard setbacks for the livable structure area going from the twenty-foot setback to a twelve and one-half foot setback, and another in the setback between multiple family group buildings going from the fifteen-foot to a ten-foot for two, the two-story buildings of the townhomes. Thirdly, the dwelling units per acre ratio as presented in the zone change request is above the dwelling unit densities as proposed for this specific area in the general plan. The general plan does allow for three to four dwellings per acre ratio, along with the planned unit development standards, which allow for an increase to that ratio as spelled out in the PUD regulations. It appears that the tree-lined streets and the other, and the landscaped open space options are being sought out by the applicant to get to their five point five dwelling units per acre request. Please note that in the regulations for density increase, the verbiage changes from the single-family standards, which state that in no case shall exceed eight dwelling units per acre, versus the verbiage in the multifamily standards with, standards which state in no case shall exceed twenty-five percent dwelling units per acre. Thus, I give you a little matrix here, the single-family designated area is fifty-one units. The area that that is going to be on is thirteen point seven nine acres, which is equal to a three point six nine dwelling unit per acre in the pod one area, which is that green area in your map. The multifamily designated area is proposing one hundred and thirty-three units in an area covering eighteen point four eight acres, and that is equal to a seven point one nine dwelling unit per acre ratio on the, in pod two, which is the purplish area that you see there. The park designation area is no dwelling units, and it is covering an area of zero point nine two acres, again, with no dwelling units per acre, which still needs to be calculated in the overall calculations on the project. So using the standards in the PUD regulations, pod one could have up to six dwelling units per acre ratio, pod two could have up to five dwelling units per acre ratio. Currently, pod one is under the available, and pod two is over the available. The average between the two is right down the middle with a five point five dwelling unit per acre ratio. Staff will let the applicant make their case, and this was to the planning commissioners to weigh out how it feels meeting the criteria for increase of dwelling units. After a tabled motion from the original public hearing date, the applicant was asked to look at several items by the planning commission that concern them as part of this proposed PUD. Those items included, one, private streets versus public streets on the two main thoroughfares accessing the entrances and exits of the development. Number two, widening the internal trailways, which is basically, there's not a lot, but it's around this particular area, it has the pod three written in it. Number three, widening the view corridor along, um, on the south portions of the townhomes running along Washington Park, Washington Fields Road, which is directly across from the two streets in that particular area, on the backside of those townhomes. Number four was pod three needs to have more amenities, example was adding a playground area, again, we go back to this particular area. Number five, lots one through fourteen to have the standard twenty-foot front yard setback, and that's these lots one through fourteen, is that they would then end up matching what those are across the street in that subdivision. Lastly, number six, the reduction of the density in pod three. The planning commission wanted to see ninety units versus a proposed one hundred townhome product. They felt one hundred was too much. The applicant returned to the planning commission with only two changes to the two main streets that were running through the proposed development. They were, however, not according to the standard fifty-foot cross-sections, they have proposed differently, forty-four foot, and you can see the design of it. Sorry, this goes in at a, that angle, which we could turn that, maybe, or why don't we just go to Elmo instead, because I need to add a few things on here. So we'll bring that up here in a second. So, again, they're, they're in, I guess they were proposing that they go with a forty-four foot, and I'll show you the difference that, that is there. Um, they are?
When you say they, you're still talking about the planning commission?
No, they being the applicant, showing the forty-four foot. The, the planning commission wanted a fifty-foot residential street. And so there are modified versions the applicant's wishing to have approved as part, so they're just asking that the city council, which has the authority, you know, the ability to override that, consider that. They also addressed the wider trail within the townhome area, and also agreed to the twenty-foot front setbacks along Heritage Drive, those lots one through fourteen that we, I referenced here a little while ago. The other items were not changed, which was the view corridor, more amenities, and reducing density. The planning commission reviewed the changes, along with the remaining proposal from the applicant during their meeting of October third, two thousand eighteen. The planning commission, by a vote of four to one, recommended denial of Z dash eighteen dash fourteen of the zone change request from residential agricultural two acre minimum to the RA two, and the open space portion, which is the null, to the proposed planned unit development residential and planned unit development commercial. Request for the single-family residential and multifamily residential and commercial development standards as found in our zoning ordinance. And this recommendation was on to you, the city council, was based on the following reasons, because we always make sure we give reasons for denial, and it was, quote, "density is too high, would like to have eight to ten units less," that the road cross-sections don't meet the city standards, "the twenty percent landscape shown needs justification with an exhibit," and that there are not enough amenities for the townhome area. Also, the motion was given stated, he has other concerns, but the four are the reasons for this denial. Just for your information, the following information was given to the planning commission by staff. There were findings, and there were conditions, if they felt that the project met approval, and I just left those with you for your reference. For some reason, you may want to use them in a couple of weeks, if you get to that point. I just want them to be as part of your, part of your report. Now, I just will come over here and show you the modified street version. So this is the one that they're having run through, those two main corridors that were talked about, that come off of Heritage Fields Road, Washington Fields Road, and then off of Sandia heading north. And so they're proposing that it be a, basically a forty-four foot public street. And there's the dimensions. Basically, what's missing is there is no sidewalk, you can see on the left-hand side, which would account for five more feet, and then they're cutting down the asphalt width of the road as well by, um, should be, I guess, one more foot. Doesn't sound right, but, no, it doesn't, because they've added a landscape strip in there, so the asphalt's being cut down quite a bit, by five feet now. As you can see, because they're going with the tree-lined streets, they're going to plant, you see that one on the left-hand side that says a twenty-foot setback, they'd be required to make sure trees are in there at every forty foot on center. And also, as you see that landscape strip on the right-hand side of that exhibit, the trees would be planted in that landscape strip at a forty, forty foot or less on center planting. So there's five foot less asphalt and four foot less sidewalk.
And how much more landscape strip? Well, they don't even have to put that in usually.
No, they don't on a standard street.
Right.
But like I say, what, what we've done in the past with our bonus density program has been that when people take advantage of that, it ends up being a fifty-eight foot public right-of-way on a residential street, because they've added four-foot a planter strip on each side. And then the road stays the same, they've just put in planter strips there. And that's how they've gotten their credits on some bonus density projects in the past. So this is, we haven't seen anything like this.
The intent of the bonus density is to get those wider streets and those wider corridors to give you the more open feel of the projects, that's the whole reason behind the bonus density program.
When we figure density, are we including the hill?
No. It didn't include the hill, that's that why I calculated the thirty-nine or thirty-seven acres. The overall project is forty-seven point four, I think, and I took the hill out.
Okay.
So we're not giving them any credit now, again, because our, our PUD says it's, it's usable land. Now, there, there probably is some usable land. Now, there probably is some usable land, and that's why I wanted to not beat up, you know, the applicant too bad with spaghetti noodles, is that we didn't even calculate, there probably is some that they could use if they wanted to go through that with the hillside protection. So I'm just saying, that's kind of out there. If you're close to teetering, then you could probably use that as kind of a point to say, well, we haven't even calculated the usable area that could be on top of the hill around parts of the side that could have been included in their acreage. I just want to make you aware of that, that we didn't, we just left it off the table right now. Just trying to get it in and make everything fit with this land, but I would like you to keep in back of your mind if you have something that, you know, there probably is some acreage that is usable that could have been thrown in, but we don't want to touch that. We just want to use it as a, you know, if I have to round up for a thing, we'll round up.
If they threw in the usable acreage up on the top, then what would the ratios be?
Well, I don't know, because we haven't calculated that out yet. We haven't gone up and specifically, you know, done all the topos and find that. I mean, if we need to, that's an option that's there to be able to go and do that.
I would question the usability of some of that up there for the mere fact that they've already zoned, to me, where you would access it is not part of the PUD anymore. So how do you even access the hill at this point? I just don't see you get on top to access it. So to me, it isn't usable, even though it's flat up there. It's not usable because you can't access it.
They can't access it from the part of the other PUD that we already approved?
Because it's not part of the PUD, they straight zoned it.
Okay, but can they access it from there?
It's not part of the PUD, it's not part of this parcel. They separated it off parcels.
I think, you know, just, I totally agree with what's been said, but they were asked to put something up there as a, as some usable part of that or to make it where people could get to it. I think they're putting that in here because it really didn't go with the other piece because it wasn't part of that subdivision. I don't want to ding them completely real hard maybe, but not saying, but they were just asked to put that on there, and we were, we've been telling the planning commission and city council, they were going to include that as part of the PUD, you know, over here when they brought it in, so.
Yeah, I was saying, I, I mean, the hill is an asset, okay? It's an asset to our city and to those people that live in that area. I do believe somehow or another, I'd be getting some credit for that asset.
And that's why I just made that aware to the council, because it is, it's not being touched. You know, like I say, we've put on there, one of the conditions is that it would always stay in, you know, undisturbed, unused.
Part of the argument of that is, that's part of the reason we put in hillside ordinances is to preserve those. That's been in place forever. So why should you get credit for something that's been, that thing was preserved long before they ever came on?
Well, I suppose part of the question is, did they pay for that?
Well, they did, shame on them, they should have done. Obviously, you know, when you got a hillside there that's unusable, you've got a hillside that's unusable, I wouldn't pay for.
I guess in kind of in discussion, just kind of the devil's advocate concerning this is, I can see where Councilman Granger was coming from, because I can see where Sittler developed viral dump and just removed the hill. It's gone, now they can put stuff in there.
Well, yeah, some of those, that goes back to your slopes, and that's why the hillside owners had slopes and those things, and some of them mean it, some of them don't. Obviously, the one out there at the hillside wasn't a significant hillside that we perfected it.
And this one is.
This would be exactly, if you look at the cut behind those two houses there right off of Washington Fields Road, that was the, that was where the hillside ordinance kicked in, it's where that cut ended. In fact, there was a lot of discussion on the councils where that cut was coming from, how that hillside would have happened, it's like, where does that hillside stop right there? And that was, that was a big discussion point.
Appreciate that, thank you.
So if I may just run through, and I apologize, I thought these were tagged on as part behind, so I just wanted you to see these few exhibits. This was just showing the tree-lined streets, some of the greener area on the project. It's changed some colors up for your, you know, for your view. It's all just run through these real quick. You do have all the elevations in your project, you know, in your report, but I do point out that this one, I thought was tagged behind one of their new exhibits where they added those two street changes, but I apologize, it wasn't in there. But this just shows the streets with the trees on them.
Basically, you think that's really the only exhibit that you didn't get?
Drew, the last time we saw planning here, we had the commercial area in the middle right across from the church house, not on the corner. And part of the reason was traffic backup, being able to get in and get out before you hit the street light. Can you tell me why that's changed?
I think it's probably for them, it's more visibility and commercial for the use of it, and for the clients that it would generate would probably be on the corner. We had this discussion, I think, quite a few, as we went through this project, I think, four or five times over the years, many years. You know, first, we were trying to get, there was an application for commercial across the street down the parkway that the state is on there, and then it ended up here. And, you know, there's always a discussion that putting homes on the corner, I don't know if that's a better option or not for folks. Those would be the hardest homes to sell. I wouldn't want to live in one. I don't know many people that would, being on that, that corner with that street light, traffic signal, I mean, so it's going to be a busy one, so. But with that, you know, they'd have to be putting in, of course, they're going to be ride-in, ride-out only type, you know, scenarios in this case. They could, you know, also be required maybe to put in a turn lane as part of the property, take it in, that they'd be going in and maybe have a little bit of an acceleration coming out.
Still no way to get back on Washington Fields if you're coming off of it.
Well, that's, if there was a way to go turn onto that public street that you see on top of the commercial there, that's going to be a full access. You know, it'd be wise that they would have, you know, probably a way to get out there, and then the people could hang a left, and it's not going to be greatly convenient, but...
That's a lot of traffic out there.
Yeah. Well, it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of traffic, no matter what we put there on those roads, for sure.
Well, it's not so much the traffic as much as the safety. I just, I'm having a hard time seeing that connection in a safe manner for people to exit in and out. I'll continue to listen.
I'll be, if you have any questions for me before you open up your public hearing, I'll be glad to answer anything else that...
Any other questions for Drew or the applicant? No, this is a public hearing. Maybe it may have an interest or disinterest. Be welcome to come up and share those thoughts. They won't be voting on this tonight. I hope you're aware of that. There's a two-week period before the vote is made.
Okay. Well, I guess, I guess my biggest concern is...
We need your name, please.
I'm sorry, Marlena James. And I do live on the corner, and so my house is on the corner, and it's, but I go into my house through a cul-de-sac. I did prepare a statement, and I read it to the city council or to the planning commission, and I'm going to go ahead and read pretty much the same statement. But I guess my biggest concern is, is are we here together as a council for the developer? Or are we here for the members, you know, and for, you know, for us as citizens? Listening to the meetings and to the notes last time, it seems like, sorry, you're going to have to remind me of your name.
Drew Ellerman. Mr. Ellerman.
Yeah, Drew, it might be for more of the developer than what he is for, you know, looking out for our best interests. That's a huge concern for me, but I'm going to go ahead and read my statement here. My name is Marlena James, and I live at 491 East Stanley Circle, and I've lived there for 18 years, and I've lived in Washington City for 30 years. My property is within 100 feet of the proposed zone change. The side of my home and the bedrooms faces the 2000 South. While I'm strongly opposed to the zoning relocation revision and the land used for the subject property, I would like to begin by saying very much, I'm a pro-growth person. Both myself and my husband work in the building development industry and believe that positive and effective growth, with concerns of respect for those in our community. I don't do very good standing up and doing this. So you can tell how passionate I am for me to even get up here and speak in public because I don't do very good at it at all. But with this proposed, however, site does not merit positive and effective growth. By putting a large heavily trafficked convenience store or any type of commercial in the middle of a chiefly residential area represents the worst type of spot zoning. The developer compared the proposed subdivision to a Kachina Springs-like slash intrata field. But certainly, you do not see those subdivisions with a three and a half to a 10 parcel acre awkwardly positioned in the middle of a residential neighborhood. That is due to the proper planning. Other attempts have been made on the property adjacent to this and within 100 feet of my home as well. Everybody knows that's a saley, old saley property. It's been denied several times. Every time we've been up here, and it's came back with the same, the same thing, it's not merit, it's not a good, good use for this. Why should this parcel be now considered for this type of use when it's already made its decisions? It is inappropriate for this location. The traffic on this corner is already extremely busy without any additional commercial traffic being added. It is interesting to me that the site plan and the developer has positioned the townhomes around the commercial zone and not the garden homes or the traditional homes, with block walls separating the commercial from this parcel. You know what? I don't really have the funds or nor do the neighbors to be able to block ourselves from this. And I, my question is, why do you think that is? I kind of answered my own question, and I kind of know why it is, why they've built those block walls off from that. The developer's request is purely fiscal and for-profit driven with the benefit of the developer and with complete disregard to the surrounding communities and what our actual needs are. We have said time and time again, we do not want this nor need it, a commercial in the heart of our bedroom community. This type of commercial wall assuredly bring a huge increased traffic volume and accidents, light pollution, which is a huge concern of mine. I mean, those lights are going to be right into my bedroom windows. Environmental odors, processing of food and waste, and automobile emissions, et cetera. And I've said before, I don't love the smell of cows, but I would rather have the cows there. I chose that. I chose that when I bought my property to live by that. I think that we, as homeowners, have the right to say, you know, we don't need this in our community, and we don't want it there. Significant loss to the equity and the value of our existing homes and its surrounding properties. And I've proven this to the council before, times coming up here, with documentation that I presented to the city council with Alaska around from letters and documentation from real estate agents telling me that if I was going to sell my home, I better get it sold quickly, because it would affect my property value extremely. Things that might be trivial to you, trivial to you, but not if it was your home, your investment in your future. As our elected officials, I'm asking you to please listen to the vote of the majority and not the interest of just one. Please protect our communities and our homes of the Washington City citizens. Thank you.
One question, a clarification. From what I've gathered, your biggest concern is the commercial parcel?
Absolutely, with the zoning being changed, with it being on the corner there. Because not only this parcel, but I can see where it's going, because the old saley property that's right directly behind my home, that is for sale. I contacted the real estate agent and asked him how he was, that's being represented, and it's right now is zoned as your long-term plan as residential. But he has told me that he's been contacted by the council members himself, that they are wanting that to be commercial. So I can see where this is going if this gets to be zoned commercial. We've got a Maverick here. That he's been contacted by, I don't know, he didn't give me a name, but his name was... Let me tell you, hold on, sorry, I should have had that here. Greg Whitehead. He told me that he's been contacted by you guys, or somebody.
Well, I'll set the record straight, he hasn't been contacted by me.
Okay, he's been contacted.
He hasn't contacted anybody.
That, you know, that's...
He wants that property sold.
That he wants it, that they want it to be, and you know, that's, if this, if this zone change gets made, so it is commercial. It's not so much, this gentleman, he has a beautiful community coming in there. I welcome that. Like I said, my husband and I work in this type of industry, too. He has the right to develop it, but develop it with us in mind. We've been there a long time, and it's so awkwardly positioned, and we've told them time and time again that this doesn't work here. Even Bert Saley said last time, we tried to do this before. It might have worked 10 years ago, it's even worse now. Move it down towards the farm, move it down where they're building the schools and stuff. But in this, in our opinion, and I mean, that's why I'm here to fight for it and to, you know, have you guys listen to me.
Great, thank you. I will answer your one question you brought up about Drew. I'll set the record a little bit straight there, too. Drew has a responsibility to this council to represent the applicants to make sure that they dot the i's across, that they meet our city's standards and ordinance. So sometimes it does come across that he is pro-developer, because that's his job. But really, it's just simply saying, look, guys, here, they meet it, use the council to make the decision. In fact, you've heard the night say, "We suggest tonight."
Also, kind of a clarification, if I'm wrong, by state law, he is arguing in defense of those who are trying to develop the lands that come before us, pretty much.
Yeah, that's correct. Let me just fix that. So, yeah, because of the nature of property rights and how those are carved out in statute, staff, not elected officials, have a responsibility to work with the developer to try to enhance in their compliance property rights. And as was mentioned by Councilman Turek, when staff has concerns with those, they'll note them, as they did tonight, and in the planning commission. But when they don't have concerns with that, they have a responsibility to help those property owners exercise their property rights under state statute.
And I guess the biggest thing that stood out to me last time that I was here, it was, they started talking about, well, this developer has the right to develop it, you know, he did purchase this property with a 10-acre parcel in mind, you know, so he paid a premium price. That was mentioned by Mr., and then also by people on the council. And I thought, you know, we have, just, we might have brought our homes at a premium price, too. It's not just the developer that has, you know, interest in it, we do, too. And so I guess that's what has stuck with me for the past...
No, I could appreciate that, and I just kind of wanted to set it straight, because sometimes it does, it does appear for that in the audience of, hey, this guy's on the developer's side now.
Right, and I appreciate it.
By law, he has to be.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify also, planning, I tell you, I at least once, maybe twice, at any of those meetings, they talk about what the developer's plotland for, is it's not a part of what the planning commission or the city council even takes into consideration because it's got nothing to do with it. So despite the fact that it gets raised sometimes, we don't take that, we're not supposed to take that into account anyway. We decide what development's supposed to look like in our community, not what they paid for, so.
Hello, my name is April Pratt, and I live on Heritage Fields Drive in Heritage Fields. Let me start off by saying that I thank you for having this hearing and getting our input, and I appreciate your time and efforts and your positions. And I also would like to let the developer know that we are grateful that he is a good builder and that he wants to create something nice, and he has some great, some great plans. However, I am opposed to many parts of this plan, and I'll go into those. First off, just feel that the townhomes don't go with the flow of Washington Fields. It's, Washington Fields, there is a draw to it. People want to move to the fields because they're close to commercial, close to conveniences of life without it being our back door. And there's many, the flow of Washington Fields is single-family homes. And it would bring home values down, it would be detrimental, and that's a huge concern. Also, the concern with what the lady said before me is the commercial. I know that Washington Fields Drive is viewed as a main thoroughfare. I'm guessing to lead to the airport. My argument with that is, if we're trying to put commercial along Washington Fields Drive, because there, you know, it's a thoroughfare to get to the airport, a 15-minute drive from I-15 to the airport does not need a pit stop. The main focus would be for travelers coming from northbound to go to the airport would be at that exit. That would be most ideal, or closer to the airport. But in the middle, it's a 15-minute drive, there just is not a need for a pit stop there. With that said, also, at a previous meeting, it must have been a couple of years ago, when the issue of commercial going into this area was brought up, I had a conversation with Mr. Balliston, and he assured me that the commercial that would be going in, if it all, would be neighborhood-friendly, which to me means no sound pollution or light pollution, those sorts of things would be... It would be a quiet, little neighborhood-friendly commercial. I've been hearing many rumblings that they want to put a gas station and I'm starting to feel like gas stations are like churches in Utah, one on every corner. And I think it's kind of silly that we have so many gas stations. There's some this direction and that direction and it just, anyway, that's my issue with This intersection of 2000 South and Washington Fields Road is a very dangerous intersection. There are frequently accidents there and my fear is that commercial there would increase that. That was another point. Just looking over my notes. I just feel like the changes being made need to be made with the big picture in mind, not just, are we going to get money from this? But the long-term ramifications from the plan and also how it will affect the residents that live right around the area. I know that the property owner has a right to do what he wants with his property. However, there should also be consideration of the residents because we're all living with it. I sent an email, I hope you got it, a few weeks ago when I was thinking that the planning commission meeting was with the city council. So it's been a couple of weeks, but I'm grateful that you did get those emails. Let's see. Okay. I believe that was all that I wanted to bring up. Anyway, in conclusion, just feel like the townhomes don't fit with the flow of Washington Fields and there's not really a reason or a need for commercial in the middle of Washington Fields on that road when there are plenty of spaces. Oh, one thought I wanted to add was that it's a lot easier to put commercial where there isn't a lot of houses right around it because then people, when homes start being built, they know where they're moving, they know that there's commercial. But when you're going to put commercial right near where there's a lot of homes, it's going to be fought and it's, it's not really considerate. Anyway, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Before you go, well, I guess maybe I should ask this question of staff first. We, I don't think we even know what is proposed as far as any business going in here. So everything, everything we're talking about as far as potential business is either A, limited by the restriction of the zoning or B, just rumor, right?
I hope what I've been hearing is just rumor because if they're wanting to put another gas station in there, it's just rumor. And that's who, yeah, that's who I heard it from and...
So I guess my question to you would be, is there any type of commercial that you would?
So Troy mentioned with the neighborhood-friendly, he mentioned something kind of like a farmer's market, something where it's just really low-key and it's not having the lights all night and the late hours and the high-density traffic.
Can I give you a kind of example, a comparable, kind of like a Red Barn, like we have in Seattle?
Red Barn or like fries in Santa Clara.
Family.
Yes.
Yeah. That's what I just want to clarify.
Something similar to that, where it would have similar types of hours and lighting. Preferably, I wouldn't want commercial there, but if, you know, I was a little more at ease when Mr. Belliston told me that it would be neighborhood-friendly. I thought, okay, well, I can deal with that.
Okay.
So.
Well, I think so. So and then as far as the not fitting into the fields, are you thinking of just the look and the feel of the, of the townhomes there or?
Just that there's no other townhomes in the fields. There's no other townhomes in the fields.
Well, which is, which is true. You know, and I guess sitting on the council, we hear and we deal with, you know, issues of lack of affordable housing there and I don't think he's qualified.
These are not affordable housing.
I agree. I agree, but I also...
And there's not a lack of affordable housing in Washington City. There's a lot of affordable housing in Washington City.
Name one.
There's many trailer parks. There's many trailer parks.
Would you want your children to live there?
What's that?
Would you want your child to live there?
I think that there's plenty of, I don't know anyone who lives in the trailer parks, but there's some that look...
Name one. I have a son that's been looking for two years.
Ms. Pratt, I do agree that there's...
These are not affordable housing.
I do agree with her saying that that is affordable housing.
We haven't given her the challenge to prepare for this.
These are going to be $300,000 to $400,000.
But may I do have to introduce one thing that is on the mind of the council is to do, look for ways where we can find areas where more affordable is, housing is, and that we do have a deficit. It would be nice to have more. That being said, where to put it is always the question of the day, whose backyard? And I do appreciate your insight that there is some places people can live.
And there is a lot of open space for affordable housing to be built in where, where, you know, I mean, if you go along Telegraph, I know that there, just north of Telegraph, east of 300, there's affordable housing in there.
Yeah, where I live.
I don't know what they're called, but you know, where Turner Turf Farm is over there, I believe that's some affordable housing in there, they're kind of duplexy. Anyway.
We do appreciate your insight. Thank you.
So that's what I'm trying to balance in my mind is we're thinking about a vote coming up in two weeks is, one of the things that I honestly am proud of about Utah is the way that it deals with diversity of social economics and integrates neighborhoods together. And so at some point, we either have to say, well, the fields, the fields are just houses, standalone houses, or there is a place in the field someplace, or maybe even other places within Washington city limits that have the capacity to have, you know, lack of a better term, a diversity of that type. So I, I've kind of leaned more towards the quality of that product because we, we look at those products that are built well and they're well-maintained and they stay, they stay nice as a, as a, as a long-term benefit there. And I, so I wondered, I know that that's not a question, but I wonder if I could tack out a question mark on the, on the end of that and just have you respond to that.
So if, if these were affordable housing, that would be more of an issue, but they're not affordable housing. So if you're want, if the city is wanting more affordable housing, the builder can't build it on this because of the cost of the property, because of the value of the land in Heritage, in Washington Fields. There are, I know that the values of land vary throughout our city limits and I believe that there are, there's plenty of space in our city limits where actual affordable housing can be built, but this, these townhomes are not affordable housing. So the purpose for putting them there doesn't really make sense in the, in the, in the end because it's not affordable. They're going to be $300,000 to $400,000. That's not affordable. So if it's not going to be affordable, there's not a reason to put it in there. So there might as well be that thinned-out density instead of creating more traffic on an already stressed road system. And those roads that go through that land, they're going to be highly used. They're going to be at the...
Well, that's a major, I think it's a major concern for myself.
It is a huge concern.
I've heard other council members refer to that as well.
Now, I'm not sure if there are sidewalks on those main veins. Okay, that can, that also poses a danger when, when these roads are going to be a main, I mean, people are going to cut through there. Calling it a private road or a public road or whatever, it's going to be, it's going to be zipping through. People are, I mean, unfortunately, that, I mean, people from any direction, they're going to use that to cut through and get to their, on their way, so.
So when it's affordable housing, I think one of my concerns is that you do have to worry about how it ages. And, and I think the expense of this will probably age very well, but that doesn't, that doesn't sway you from any of your opinion on the density there.
No.
And just one other, one other, it's probably a comment with a question mark at the end. I know the developer has kind of talked about that he purchased this with, you know, because it's general plan for, for commercial. Just your response on his comments that if he can't get this out of it, that he might look at more commercial, with a proposal of more commercial.
Well, it's not set in stone.
No.
So we could fight that too.
That's what, that's what you would ask the council to do is to continue to fight that.
This is, this is close. This is so close to being ideal in many of our opinions.
Well, this project is?
This project, it's close. Like I said, really the biggest beefs are some of the safety issues and the townhomes, the density. I really would prefer no townhomes and he could just fill in with more other homes, but I know that that's not going to be as profitable.
Well, part of it is putting the larger lots along Washington Fields, okay? They're, they're not likely, as likely to sell them as they are tucked in the back, but really what's nice about part of this is there's, you know, a starter home there and then there's, you know, when you have more money or more kids, you could move up into the garden homes and then you can move into the others and still live in the same community.
I mean, a $300,000 townhome is not, that wasn't a starter home amount for me.
I don't know the price. Do you know the price?
We paid a lot less, yes. They were, we were told by the developer that the townhomes would be around $300,000 and up to $400,000. Oh, starting at, okay, so starting at 250.
Which is getting close to the median home in Washington.
Unfortunately.
Now, if you, if you drive along Washington Fields Road, I'm very familiar, this is, obviously it's my stopping grounds, you drive along there, there are plenty of nice neighborhoods with homes that back up to Washington Fields Road. So the idea that putting, putting bigger homes along that backside of Washington Fields Road and having them not sell, to me, that's kind of baloney because if you drive along, if you drive along Washington Fields Road, all the way down, there's lots of nice neighborhoods that back up to Washington Fields Road. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
My name's Kathy Massey.
Pardon me, what was she naming you, ma'am?
Kathy Massey.
Thank you.
We live on Meadow Lane between the damn road and the two churches. So councilwoman and councilman, thank you for listening to me. So we've owned our home for 16 years. The last few years, we've had to travel for work. So we've seen other cities and talking about that commercial, when we lived in Meridian, Idaho, we actually had down the road from us, sandwich shops and places like Neater's and we enjoyed that. We'd go with our friends out to eat. So something like that, I think would be enjoyable. When we lived in Vegas, I know a lot of people complained about having a gas station because the lights are on all night, the noise is there all, all night. So I think there could be, that's a big thought. Anyway, we lived in a townhome, nice, very nice townhomes when we lived in Provo. And I, the problem we had was parking because this townhome, they don't have any extra parking. We did. And they still parked on the street, which made it extremely dangerous to get out of there without being hit. Our concern is they're not going to have enough room to park. A two-car garage won't fit a van and a truck in it. And even with the driveway, if you've got kids or whatever, there's not enough parking. And we had extra spaces to park and they still parked on the street. Does that mean they're going to park on, on the Fields Road? No, they can't. Are they going to park by Cantorwood? Are they going to come into our cul-de-sac and park? Where are they going to park? Because that was a major problem. And we had a mixture of housing apartments and townhomes. I hated driving in Provo so much, I went to Springville to do my shopping, to go to the bank and to do everything because it's unsettling to have that much all around you. I did not like it. Like April said, everyone in this, who knows anything about St. George, when you say you live in the Fields, they know that's the best part of St. George. It just is. Because it's always been taken care of by those who have designed it. The park that was approved is beautiful. I'm grateful for the streetlights that have come in to keep us safe. My big concern are the townhomes and the little, what do they call those? Patio homes, garden homes. I just, I, yeah, it's too much and the roads are too small and what are you going to do in an emergency with fire trucks and everything? It's a big concern for me.
We always have, we always require that the fire trucks be able to go in and get out and turn around and that's, that's all standard for us.
Yeah, they look at that. So it's just, I just really appreciate the folks who've come. Appreciate the discussion and the conversation and I, my intention, I think, was to add, was to kind of make this comment later, but I'll just put it out there and you don't need to respond to it, but others, if they want to. One of the things that concerns me about traffic in Washington is that we have, we've put all of our commercial properties kind of in, in certain locations and it causes, it causes us to drive long distances to come out to it. I have for some time thought that we would be better off to place some, some small local places around where, you know, maybe you don't do all your shopping there, but you're, you're once a week or nightly a little jaunts to go pick up something and then you, and then you go, your longer drive to go out to Walmart or Costco in those areas.
Walmart is just up the road.
Well, it is up the road. It is up the road, but it's, but it's a congestion issue for us currently. We're, we're looking at some, some fairly radical solutions in order to, in order to fix some of those areas, diversity of commercialization in the areas. So I think I got my answer from you there, but the difficult thing about that, then of course, is when you zone it, you don't get, you don't get to pick what goes there. You just get to pick what, because we're, we still have to abide by the laws and all we get to do is just say, it's, it's zoned for this and then the landlord again gets to sell it to whoever wants, so.
Well, I know in the places we've lived, there have been townhomes fairly close to us, but they're in a place where they're not obtrusive. To me, this seems in your face. You know, if you go on the road with where Walmart is, you could, they do have some townhomes there, you could do townhomes there, you could do more commercial. This isn't really a commercial place, is it?
It's interesting, I was talking to the Walmart manager and they can tell you precisely how many of the Fields residents stopped going to Walmart and now going to Linz because of the convenience.
Okay.
So, or Smiths. So it is a factor. I mean, it is a factor of convenience and we do know that for a fact. People will still want to go very close.
I would revolt, if we had a grocery store here, I'd revolt, I wouldn't go there. Or a gas station. I'm sorry, I wouldn't. But I'm glad to lunch.
Yeah, see, the interesting thing is that Smiths and Linz are nice and close, but now your tax dollars go to St. George. And I'm sure they're just thanking you every minute of the day for that.
Which keeps the mayor awake at night.
Thank you so much for your comments. Is there anything else? Thank you.
Evening. My name's Markel Massey. I'm Kathy's husband. Appreciate your time tonight. A couple of comments, a couple of questions. In, in looking at this, what I noticed, they mentioned a couple of times tonight, the 34-foot wide streets have a 12 and a half foot lane on each side, which is, as Ben mentioned, is a concern. lane on each side, which, um, is, as Ben mentioned, is a concern with parking. People park in the street, and that means a fire truck can't get through because of the narrow, narrowness of the streets. And with them being private streets, I assume that, that parking is not enforced by the city, I'm assuming. So, that, that's a big concern to me. Meadow Lane is directly across this, uh, corner of the lot right there. So, having, as Kathy mentioned, having lived in a townhome community, uh, the street we lived on was a public street. We had 20 units on our street, and we had 11 additional stalls, parking stalls, for the 20 units. And those 11 stalls were always full. I counted, um, 124 units and 37 stalls, which, if I compare where we lived to, to what's here, that means that there's less stalls that's there. And so, people, I'd watch them, and they'd get creative, and they would park in the street or whatever. So, my question, uh, in the back of your minds, to be there, does that mean then, when grandma comes over to visit, and the kids are in the driveway, and their, one car's in the garage and the other one's in the driveway, then do they park in the church parking lot, or do they come and park in our, in our street? Meadow Lane is, is a short street. Those are the two streets closest to the, where the townhomes are. That's where I'd see the, the congestion. The, the second concern is a fire access. So, if, if there's ever cars parked there, and if it's not publicly enforced, and I don't know how the HOA would, would do this, I would assume the HOA isn't responsible for, for enforcement of the traffic parking. But if a fire truck needs to get in there, people are parked out in the street because the driveway's full and the parking stall, stalls are full, then to me, that's a concern. I also noticed on the plat that between the units, and these are two-story units that back up to Washington Fields Road, that they only have a 10-foot space between the units. As a builder, that, that makes me nervous. If there was ever a fire, the fire hydrants are gonna be on those private streets, and that's where the fire truck is gonna go. And so, for them to, to walk between, uh, two-story buildings that are only 10 feet apart, that's a concern from a safety standpoint, not only for the people that live there, but for the neighbors next door. The, the building next door then becomes, uh, a concern. Um, having, um, built in the Fields, I, I was a superintendent on the building of the LDS Church that's in Pineview Estates, and, and part of our work included tying in sewer and, and water, uh, to the system there. But my question is, uh, to, to the city, is, is there enough, um, volume, capacity in the system that the city has sewer and water, that if everybody who was developing these parcels of property from here down to where the sewer, uh, then becomes St. George's, or, is there enough capacity? If there's 184 units here in the, the field across the street, it's 184 units for 47 acres, is there capacity, or, or does the city then get stuck down the road with having to, to go in and tear up the streets and do this? Uh, my last concern, uh, and I think it's been hammered, i- is the density compared to everything else. It's, it's two to three times the density of, of anything that's out here. And, and being one of the neighbors that's close, those are my concerns. So, thank you.
I wanted to talk to Mr. Ward a really fast, again, Marlena James. When you talked about putting in commercial, um, I guess neighborhood commercial, you know, to be able to spread out the traffic on that. Um, I work with, for a developer and a builder, and, you know, nowhere do you see in Santa Clara, Bloomington, Bloomington Hills, um, and Trotta, any of those places, the you, is it just something for three and a half acres stuck right in the middle of it, and then maybe that you get the acreage, and that right next to me is three acres. It's not awkwardly positioned. You know, they've planned it out, and they've put, like, the Smith's, where there's a bigger parcel of it, so people, like, again, can build, choose to build around it. Again, this is only three acres, and then the one behind me is, another's 3.07 acres. It's, again, surrounded. Um, if you look at any of the other subdivisions in town, or any of the other commercial subdivisions that they, or that they put in there, it's not surrounded on all four, um, places that there is homes all of the way around it. There are larger parcels, um, of acreage, and they put commercial in there, and then they let people decide to move, move around there. So, again, and, and guess in my opinion, what I'm trying to say is, it's too small and to put, to put it, if you, if we need commercial and we need to build it, this isn't the corner or the right place for it. And like Burke Staley said, there's more property down by the farm. And, you know, build it down there or out by Stukey Farms, where you can get in and off of the exit, not in the heart of, of this little community.
Thank you.
My name is Roberta Trotter. Um, the one thing that I haven't heard you guys talk about at all, that I'm wondering about, is the traffic coming out of that tract on that road, coming into Washington Fields Road. You've got 185 homes with two cars in each home, and then you've got the condominiums with four, at least four to six cars in each home. And they're gonna be coming out onto that road. We have a traffic signal at the end. We have a traffic signal on the damn road. When we leave the chapel and have to cross over the road, I live in Desert Meadows, and when we try to cross over the roads, it's like taking your life in your hands. You're, you're praying the light is red, so you can get out there. Otherwise, if somebody has come through the light green, they are not going 40. I guarantee it. And, uh, so many people have almost been hit. No, they haven't. But you're adding how many more cars coming out onto Washington Fields Road, and how are they gonna turn right? Right in the middle there? Are they, these people that need to turn right and cross over Washington Fields, how are they gonna get in there? That is, I, I'm very worried about that. Um, I've been to the last planning commission meetings, the last two, and there've been six to eight new developments in the last month that was passed by them. I, I know that has nothing to do with you yet, but not one word was mentioned about, um, affordable housing. Brio just got okayed, three new plots. Stukey Farms, all that down there, they're all building. Nobody's saying, "Oh, but we need affordable housing." We're saying, "Yeah, yeah!" Well, I think if you are so concerned about affordable housing, how about going down the street to Stukey Farms, who has all this land that's gonna make his own city? And, and why don't we ask him about putting affordable housing in? Also, if you put a store in there, and I'm from California, and those cute 7-Elevens that you could just run into and buy some hamburger buns for dinner, you're paying 20 to 25 cents more per package than you are if you go to the store. You really think it's a long way to go to Walmart or Lin's? I don't know where you live, but I love that I drive where the sales are. I don't go to one place. I don't want to spend my money on food. So, I get my ad, and I check it out and find out where the sales are, and that's where I'm gonna shop. Because I don't want to give the little 7-Eleven guy money. And, uh...
It is true. I don't tell my wife where I pick up the buns.
Or how much he spends.
She gives the 7-Eleven guy the money for the gasoline, not the food. She gives him the gasoline money.
Yeah. Um, and the, the, the last thing, we really believe, this is, all of us that live around here, but the townhomes on Washington Fields Road, I know you all drive down Washington Fields Road, and you see a lot of brick walls, but in eight years, maybe five, when you drive by these townhomes and the paint is wearing off, and they're getting a little dilapidated, and no, the people that bought it now, they're strapped, so they don't have any money to paint it or clean it up or whatever. That's my big problem. I don't want to go out and see, off of the freeway where you look down and see all these homes that are a million years old, I'm sure, and, and they, they don't do anything to them. They don't care. And when you're getting townhomes, that's, that's a problem that you need to consider. If you love Washington City, that's why you ran, that's why you ran, that's why you wanted to be elected, because you love Washington City, well, think about Washington City. I think that's really important. You guys drive down Washington Fields Road. You love looking at space, and you're gonna drive down and see this apartment building right here. I just want you to think about it. Thank you.
I did, I did have to say buns, because it's really the only thing my wife will let me shop for. It's all I'm trusted with, is the buns. The buns, yeah. Sounds like you're trying to do it naturally. Well, I'm not, no. I'm, I'm totally going the closest way.
She's shopping at the gas station for them.
And, and I will let you take me for to task, because it was really my fault for bringing up the affordable housing. That's probably not fair here, but it is, it is something that we... I found it interesting she brought up, she brought up, uh, down at the Stukey Farms, because there's a big section of Stukey Farms that is affordable housing. That's, oh, yeah, a big section down there. It's small homes, very, and they call it cottages.
I didn't know those were affordable.
Well, the terminology affordable is, is, yeah, it's all over the place.
Unfortunately, St. George, Washington, ready to go. The homes that we bought 10, 15 years ago, then, uh, no.
Yeah, it does, yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Mary Ann Jones. Um, there have been a couple of things that have kind of crossed my mind, even from when we had the planning commission, um, and the, the discussion there. Um, we met as a neighborhood with the, the developer before that meeting, and when asked about the commercial portion, we kind of got dismissed. It's like, "Oh, don't worry about that. Oh, don't worry about that." And then kind of under the breath, "Well, we've been kind of talked to about a C-store there." But they didn't want to open up and share that with anybody. It was like, "No, we're gonna push this through, and then we'll worry about the commercial later." Well, quite frankly, I'm concerned about that commercial property. It's right on my backyard. And I emailed each of you about a month ago with my concerns about that. I already get woken up at 5:00 in the morning because of traffic going up and down that street. And so, to put more commercial there, along with the lights, that's very concerning to me. And at this point in time, if they did put a gas station there, it's far enough away from the church, I believe, that they can sell alcohol, which increases the safety from that area. The other morning, when I tried to get out on that road to go to work, I had to wait a while, at 7:00 in the morning to get out. And, you know, looking at the homes and the density and everything that's going to go in there, it really increases, not even talking about any commercial addition to that corner. It really adds to what's already there. I, I'm, I'm very concerned about, you know, the safety on that street, and also the, the traffic, the noise. If it's commercial, the lights that are on all night, you know, it, it really is concerning to me in that area.
Thank you.
Just a matter of clarification. Uh, as I interpret it, this, this piece of commercial still stays in a PUD, so the council would have a say in any commercial that went to that as part of the PUD process, correct?
Well, that's part of my, if you read in my report, it said that they have, they know they have to come back and present a specific plan to the planning commission and to you folks.
I just wanted to clarify. That's the way I understood it, but I wanted to make sure it was clarified that way, that, that whatever commercial may be coming in, still is gonna come back through a council process. It doesn't give it a blank check.
Yeah, with the new PUDs, the council allowed the applicants to just get the zoning, and then if they didn't have their plan, they could get up to 18 months to bring that plan before you. They have to show specifically what they're putting in there.
Correct.
Through the public hearing process, again, through planning commission and city council.
Which would not be the case to a straight zone. Straight zone, exactly. You zone it, and then if you get what you get, this way, you're...
Yes, so I'm confused, April Pratt, sorry, with that commercial, when we were told a, a couple of years ago, I had a conversation with Mr. Belliston, like I said before, that this would be a restricted commercial. I want to know if that's in writing, if that's set in stone. I mean, it sounds like it's not set in stone, but the developer can still say, "Hey, I want a Maverick here." I mean...
Well, yeah, the, the general plan was neighborhood commercial, which is what Councilman Belliston spoke of. It is very...
And what, what, I want to know the definition of that is.
Office, office space, um, through, help me here with neighborhood commercial.
Dentist's office, maybe a dental office, maybe a florist, maybe a...
Administrative professional.
Insurance agents.
But, as you pointed out, it is also allowed C1 zoning, and C1 zoning through the permission to use permit process. Okay, through... But it goes through a CUP process to do that. So, it wouldn't be, but where this is in a PUD, your council's still gonna be in the middle of it all the way through.
Okay, I don't, I don't, I don't see how a, um, even like a convenience store is considered, or a small gas station is considered neighborhood commercial. That's not neighborhood-friendly.
We haven't had anything put in front of us.
Okay, okay. Okay. I just want to make sure that's like, written and signed and stamped, and like, that it can't be a big, like, like Maverick is pretty obtrusive.
Certainly, yeah. Certainly, if it came through the council, and the council approved it, it could, I mean, could it go in? It could. Knowing this council, would I say it? Probably, probably wouldn't.
Would that be something that would be open for public hearing?
Absolutely. The same process. Just like you said, you back fight again.
Oh, what?
I think sometimes we get used to what happens in the federal government, so you don't trust anybody.
It's true.
See, I have a, I have a little brother that lives right across the street, so, you know, and I grew up, Uncle Roy had that, he's had that forever, you know? In my mind, that's a jewel of the Fields, and we need to make it a jewel of the Fields, you know? I mean, I, I can't fault the guy for wanting to develop it, and I'm sure you folks can't fault him either. You know, I've lived in Washington a lot of years, okay, a lot of decades, you know? So, and I think the council has the same, the same sentiment that I do, that we want to make sure that that's gonna be something that you folks, you know, yeah, it's gonna create additional traffic, and that's...
No, but that happens with every house we put out.
Every house we, we put out.
Some of us, I live down 2,000, and I, I wait every morning, because of all the developments happened up the streets coming out my road. Yeah, so, that's part of living in communities. As communities grow up, that's part of what we put up with. Part of what we, as, as you heard Councilman Ward talk about, part of what we look at with commercial is, is there places we can put it to diversify that traffic, so we're not inundating neighborhoods that are two miles down the road with traffic trying to get to Walmart, and they're all coming down here now, and so. And that's, that's what we say. We've looked, we're looking at areas, and that's, south is one of our strong areas.
Well, and, and one of the challenges, of course, with that is, the commercial will go where the commercial is gonna succeed.
Correct.
And we don't tell them where to go, and then they go there. They're gonna also want to look at rooftops and commerce around them, and that's only how they succeed.
A correction, it is the fastest growing.
There you go.
Whether you like that or not.
Thank you.
But yeah, but I, one of the things that I always keep in front of me, I call it the 50-year view. Will I, 50 years from now, be glad that we did this? Okay? And we have to balance that with the, um, with the rights of property owners.
Yes.
Okay? But, um, neighborhood commercial, if, if the dental office was right there, if the insurance office was right there, and you didn't have to go clear downtown to find them, you know, that's, that's not high traffic. It's not a crisis. It's, it's actually, might be very convenient. Would be nice if IHC had put a little, uh, medical area right there. That'd be nice. But we don't know any of those.
That'd be nice, but we don't know any of those and I don't believe the developers know. Even though one thinks she knows, but I haven't heard it. And I'm the one that has to vote on it. So the 50-year view, you know, are we glad that we did this 50 years from now? Well, we're going to have some regrets. Okay, we can't always get it right. But hopefully in the highest growing place that there is, hopefully we get it right more times than we get it wrong.
Ma'am.
My name is Angie Burrows and I have a different perspective because we're the only house that faces 2000 South. And so that intersection will literally be in my driveway. And I timed it yesterday and it was around four o'clock. So not really, you know, school's already been out, kids are home. It took us 13 minutes to be able to pull out and run to the store. And that's not even a peak time. So I'm thinking, you know, with the addition of that many more cars plus a commercial, I mean, are we even going to be able to use our driveway? Because if you've got the intersection right here and we're trying to pull out right here.
Are you in the home right next to the Nichols Peak subdivision entrance?
These shows.
You're talking about?
We're right.
Adams feedlot?
Yes.
Okay.
So I mean, and I realize that it really doesn't impact everybody, but it's a huge impact for us if we cannot.
Your own drive is in access in and out.
Yeah. So, you know, that's my biggest concern besides the traffic is that intersection will be right there.
Thanks, Angie.
Thank you.
Hi, Kate. I'm, I'm glad, you're probably glad to see me, not Cherry. And a quick message for Ken. Right now, top of the fourth, it's one to one.
Sweet.
Okay. As a resident of Franklin Drive, Auntie and Mary are my neighbors. We live directly across from the, the exit there on Franklin Drive. Part of our concern is also the traffic. Now, I don't know if everybody knows that there's top, top 10 things that drive property values down. And beside the cemetery and a funeral plotter and a power plant, the next things are a hospital, number one, and a convenience store is actually number two. And those are actually national stats. And another stat that I like to bring out there is for every 200 cars that are considered in a residential unit, that actually equates to 300 cars per eight-hour period. And an eight-hour period, that equals five crashes per month. So over a 12-month period, do you imagine how many crashes we have in, in just that one exit? No, I'm, these are just national stats. Now, I don't know how we're going to do here, but our concern also is related to the traffic that's going on there. Now, um, right now, we have, it's pretty convenient. We're going to add 198 cars. Sure, we have several access. But our concern is a lot of people aren't going to come out on Washington Fields Road because of just the sheer traffic line there. So most of the people are going to exit out on 2000 South or down below there, which is even a smaller road. It's, I don't know what the width of the, I don't even know the name of it. San Diego?
San Diego is this way.
Yeah, that's San Diego right there, 2000.
That's Eric Steele. That's a, that's a residential.
That is actually a small.
50 foot.
Well, it's small now. They're going to have to build that out. And so, and then also one, none of this, are they going to have to develop all this? Because there's no curb or gutter, sidewalk all the way down.
Correct.
There's no improvement on that whatsoever, either side of the road.
Now, I don't know if Larry, I mean Larry Scott.
Larry would have to. This, this would just take care of their side of the road. Those improvements would have to go in as part of this development.
Correct. Okay. That's, those are some of the concerns that we've had. But number one is the, the added traffic and the property values. And though, like I said, I just thought of bringing out some stats that just confirm our concerns that the added, uh, the added traffic's going to concern our, I mean, we, we live in a small neighborhood. It's going to be landlocked by traffic. Everything that's on this side of that commercial zone, we are going to be landlocked, that Nichols Peak zone. So I know you know where we're at, again.
More important for that grocery store so you can walk there and back.
Right now, my, my, my timing to go to the grocery store isn't a concern. I get there about two o'clock every morning. So I just thank you for your time and make, make sure that we get this right. Because it's, it's going to be a big added tax on all the traffic and population in that area. Not to mention the schools, the churches and everything else that goes along with that. Thank you.
Any questions for Mike?
The stats surprised me. I, I used to live across the street from a, from a cemetery. They were great neighbors.
Never kept you awake, did they?
Nice and quiet.
Never had a problem with them, never?
Yeah, I, when I, when I was looking at some of the stats on that, I was actually surprised. I, in fact, I didn't realize that a hospital was the number one. Hospital's the number one reason you don't want to live next to a hospital.
I could understand that.
They're open all night long, so.
The sirens running in, yeah, that could be.
Just as a, kind of a point of a clarification.
There you go, cemeteries, cemetery, where is it?
You guys are great. Let's keep going.
My name is Brooke Drew Bay. I live in the Heritage Fields neighborhood. Brooke Drew Bay. Um, one thing I didn't hear mentioned was, I know the Public Works came every time for the zoning and the streets are not decoded and they're still not decoded. And also the entrance from Washington Fields Road into that neighborhood was not where it was supposed to be.
Not aligned.
Right? Correct? The entrance, the main entrance from Washington Fields Road is not an approved entrance from Public Works. I remember them saying where they had had it was not an approved road in. Was that it? The side, I thought the location was not. And they didn't do that?
No, they didn't.
Oh, okay. So they did that. Okay. Okay. So I felt that the developer came in, the zoning commission had a list of problems and they nitpicked a couple and disregarded everything else they said. Because basically what they said is, we bought this property for prime. If we pay, if we make the streets wide like they're supposed to, make curbing, make sidewalks, take out the townhomes that were supposed to do low density, we won't make any money. They said that over and over again last time at the second meeting. They said, we can't make any changes because we won't make money. They said that to us. And also in the previous meeting that they had with the, the public before this, anybody that lived around, their comment was, to me, they said, we would have loved to come in and do quarter acre, third acre lots, but that's not what the city wants. This is what the city wants. So this is what you're going to get. Take this or take the 10 acres. Basically, that's what we came away with. Like, this is what the city wants, so we have to do this. We're not going to, we wanted to do big quarter acre, third acre lots. That's what he told me. Okay, I'm just saying, that's what Sean Sullivan told me. Yeah, I don't think any of them are here. But, I mean, we're all here.
Well.
Yeah, yeah. Anyway, so that's kind of the feeling that everyone was left is, is this is what the city wants. Um, or the threat was 10 acres or we're going to build on pop and cut out the hill. I mean, there was a lot of threats of what they're going to do. So my concern is they're skimping. I mean, yeah, oh, we'll be having trees and landscaping and, but they're just trying to put in as much as possible to make a profit. They, people around them, they're not taking any concern about the impact that it will have on all of us. And that's my concern.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Great discussion.
Come on up.
Ladies and gentlemen.
Please, welcome.
My name is Vince Matson. I live up on K Circle. Uh, when I moved here, I bought a house up there and as soon as I stepped out on the front yard, I looked out there and knocked the field coat from a great guy. This is the place. So I still love it up there. And I don't know, just from the rumors, like everybody's talking gas station or whatever. Why do you, I'm just saying this, why do you need another gas station there or a convenience store when you're 10 minutes away from one up on Telegraph? All right? If you want to put a gas station or convenience store out on Staley Far, or by Stewki Farms out that way, they've got all kinds of vacation rentals. They're putting a great big, uh, retirement deal out there too for a home. And there's other ones going out there. You also have, as far as commercial goes, you have a sod farm out there, right? And so, you know, I, the last time I went to this meeting, they said they were going to put a funeral home up there on that lot, which is great. It's quiet. You know, I mean, people, like you said, cemeteries, nobody gives, you know, no, no problem, whatever. Unfortunately, there's a lot of sad people there. But they were going to run that road, from what I understand, K Circle, all the way out to the other side past the funeral home, which I don't know if it was true or not. You hear, hear a bunch of stuff, you don't know what's true. And all we can do is go by what you gentlemen say and ladies, excuse me, and then go from there. But as far as it feels, I love it there. But traffic, I have to go on Franklin Drive to get out. I can't go down by the light and it's bad.
True. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for this gentleman?
Credit is actually true. So Washington City is likely to have an LDS temple built in it.
Where did you hear that from? We want in on that one.
Hey, you tell us where that's at.
It makes a little sense. Probably not going to be a second one in St. George.
I don't think there's any room on that corner.
So.
We heard it was going in Hilldale.
With, oh.
Sorry, that's what I heard.
Uh-oh.
That's what I heard.
Oh, my.
But that might be, you know, some good areas for commercial. Just a thought. Sorry.
Great thought.
I would just like to thank everyone who's come out because this whole process is to gather information. Do know that there is no solid decision by the council at this point. This is why we have this process. We would encourage you to continue to send us input and information and really appreciate this process. Thank you.
My name is Jason Hanson. I live here in Washington. I'm actually one of the newly appointed commissioners that heard this project. And I came tonight thinking you were going to vote on it, so imagine my disappointment. But anyway, I'm fine with that. It was actually good to hear a lot of the same people that came and spoke to us. What I just wanted to say, I told my wife, I said, I really want to get up and say something, but I really felt like I shouldn't. I just wanted to hear the process. What is frustrating to me, as I've been on both sides of this fence now, is that we addressed a lot of the things with the builder and asked them to change that the people wanted and they didn't. And that's what was disappointing to us. We asked them for the setbacks on Washington Field Road so it wouldn't be so in-your-face, like one of the ladies had said. We asked for less density. We asked for, um, what's interesting to me is a lot of talk has been about the commercial piece and we knew, it was my understanding at the time, the commercial piece didn't have anything to do with this. So that wasn't a big issue for us to worry about at that time. But a lot of the things that were talked about was the traffic, was the widening of the streets and those things. So I'm disappointed that, um, it's being brought back to try to be put in front of you again when those things weren't addressed. And so I just wanted to say that. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jason.
Now, it better not be about a shopping list of buns.
My name's Roberta Trotter. Now, at the last planning commission, the street that comes into 2000, one of the, um, committee members, he wanted that really widened. In fact, Lot 21, he was taking part of 21 and 22 and 33 and 32. He wanted that street wide because of that park in the middle that this green one closes here. And he wanted that road really wide for emergency vehicles if someone was in the park. Wasn't that one of the things? Well, that's a very important one. So again, another thing that the planning commission committee asked them to do and they didn't do it. Another thing was they counted the hill as an amenity. You know, people can walk up on the hill, so that's amenity. And one of the planning commission people said, no, the hill is not an amenity. And for 185 houses and families, you have to have more. So they put this little park up here. We still only, we, they still only have one pool for all of those houses and all of those people in the affordable housing to get over to, to, um, and, and the planning commission people said, where's the amenities? Oh, we've got two parks and a pool. For 185 places, that's not enough. Do something more. And again, they didn't. Sorry.
Thank you, Roberta.
Anybody else? Not an entertaining motion to close this public hearing. So moved. I haven't had enough, but I.
That's a fair question. Mostly what happens with this process, there's going to be a two-week period before we do any voting. Um, at this time, if you'd like to reach out to any of us, I know I'm available. We'd love to come and talk with you in person on anything. I know I have been out and I've walked through this place many times, but usually it's up to individual council members to gather more information. Uh, we like to reach out to citizens. We like to reach out to staff, verify concerns, reach out to the planning commission. We do a lot of work on our part. Um, I'm not aware, other than just what we've taken, our notes of people who've come and spoke, usually we follow up in our own ways to that. There's no real set process, but we do take a lot of care in this.
Generally not.
Generally, no.
We, we actually, outside of a meeting that we post, we can't even get together more than just two of us.
Two of us.
If three of us are together, we have to post that as a meeting.
We have a lot of data to collect.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we do anything different, we post.
Anyway, and just to make note, unfortunately, October's a blessed month. It has five Wednesdays in it. So it's actually going to be a three-week period. Because we have that extra meeting in there that, that falls in. And every once in a while, we get, how many, four or five of those a year, this is one that it's going to be a three-week.
So you'll have an extra week.
To get a seat. If you do, please come up to the microphone.
I'm Catherine Woodbury. I live in the Desert Meadows subdivision. I just want, I have a question about what the outcome will mean. Meaning that when, I don't know how the process works here. So when we came to the city planning meeting, uh, they had some bullet points that they wanted them to go back and adjust. So if you come back with a denial, will it be with a bullet list of things to fix? And will that come back to you or will it go back to the drawing board and have to go through city planning? Or what will happen?
That's a big question.
Yeah, it could go a couple of different ways. Straight out denial means it starts all over again.
Right.
It could be a tabled process that says, we'll table this for you and here's some things we want you to go back and fix.
Okay.
Um, that becomes a tabling process, which kicks the can down the road a little further. So it could go either way or it could be a straight out approval as the way it is. So that's really the three decisions you get.
We can, it's some.
Or you could tweak it a little bit.
We can have some inclusion and stuff.
We've had, we've had, we've posted a workshop, sat down and just visited to try to work through some of the difficulties, but that's posted and that's public.
Yeah, in, in previous, not in particular this one, in some others that we've had that were similar situations that neighborhoods were very concerned what was going in, that we actually brought developers in and sat down and said, look, here's our concerns, here's your concerns. Is there a way to make them work or?
Yeah. Okay, then I want to bring up one more, this little issue about the street coming into, off of Washington Fields Road, coming off of the subdivision to Washington Fields Road and then onto the 2000 South. Just to keep in mind the width of those two streets that come in and out of the subdivision, thinking if there was a car turning right, a car turning left and a car turning into the subdivision, there is just not enough room for that to happen. And that, with that amount of housing, that will take place. And so just to, just really, if, if you're going to give them a list, it needs to be wide enough to accommodate that so there's not an accident happening as people are trying to turn in and out. Because that's a big issue. Thank you. Thank you.
You're talking about the one off the Fields Road, right?
Mm-hmm. And 2000. And everything that intersects as they go up.
Yeah, the two street.
Okay.
Right here.
All right, yeah. Thank you. Okay, are we ready to close this public, are we ready to close? Okay, are we ready to close this public, are we ready to close the public hearing? Come on, come back up so we can, so you can be on record so we understand what you're trying to say.
Michael Massey, didn't the meeting minutes indicate that planning and zoning denied it?
Yes.
A vote of four to one so.
Yes. They recommended it.
They cannot deny or
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we close the public meeting. Hearing, public hearing at the moment related to the zone change request of Z dash eight dash 15.
I'll second his motion.
I have a motion in a second.
Eric I.
Ranger I.
Cliff I.
Ward I.
All right.
Mayor, can I just insert here?
It's closed, sorry.
Yeah. I just, I just really appreciate the public coming out.
Thank you for coming.
It's a great conversation, very helpful and informing opinions and thoughts to know what you're thinking and appreciate your time coming.
Oh, absolutely. I would highly suggest that.
Yeah, lots of it. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to item eight ordinances, consideration to approve an ordinance for zone change request Z dash 18 dash 14 to change zone designation from RA2 residential agricultural to acres to PDR and PDC, plan unit development residential and commercial located approximately 600 north, 1100 east. Applicant Kendall Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, this is a request for Z 18 dash 14. Change 15.526 acres into PUD. The two week holdover is now complete. The item is ready for the council action. Just to remind you that the planning commission held a public hearing before your public hearing. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of Z dash 18 dash 14 for the zone change request from residential agricultural two acre minimum, the RA2 designation to the proposed plan unit development residential and plan unit development commercial with the request for multifamily and commercial development standards. On to you, the city council, with the findings and the conditions as outlined in your report. Be glad to answer any questions you might have of your two week thought process.
Let me say, I don't have any, any questions, Mr. Ellerman. I, I do have some thoughts that that have kind of been sparked through the last two weeks is as I've gone out and looked at the property and driven up on the hillside where the motels are coming in and looked at the view shed that will look down onto this property, this particular project. And it has become kind of a heightened concern of mine that we do make sure the project's the right kind of project here because it is going to be seen. And it's going to be seen by not just local people. It's going to be kind of a view shed of what really our community is for those people that are out staying in that, in those motels and whatnot there. So feel more heightened and concerned to make sure, and I would like to hear from the developer because some of the assignments that we'd ask him to do is come in with with his wall elevations to show us what that wall is going to look like, put those landscape on the outside. Because to me, that's probably as much as important as anything, because that's part of that view shed that we're going to see is is what does that wall look like? What are the, what type of trees? Where are the trees? Those types of things. How do they shield the interior view that we may see or may not see there? So those are some things that I'd like to hear somewhat from the developers. We gave him that assignment because he left here two weeks ago.
I felt the same, just to tag on as, there's an elevation change right here in that green strip area. And I'm not sure what, what that would be too. It'd be nice to see what that might be there because it's been, you know, we know that he's all this and it is, if you drive out there, it's a good six, eight feet, you know, up there and what's that, what's that 10 foot strip?
You get on that hillside up there, especially you get a two story motel or three story motel, they're going to look that whole valley over down there. You're going to see, you're going to see everything that's inside that wall from up on that hill. And so to me, that view shed is an important view shed simply for the fact is it's, those people are looking upon our community. And they're there. And so they say that's, I kind of want to see what, what the vision is that they're going to see.
I have had the same concern all along. Which is the road. It's the road and it's not built out all the way down and yet we want to have commercial and high density housing in there. I haven't felt like that's been satisfied in any way. I don't know how staff feels about the concerns that I've had about that road.
I think we talked about that in the original approval down here when you go by the, you know, the, the biggest concern, I guess, it's always been for me is, is down by the King's Row. I've driven that many times and that's always been yeah, it's just whether it's this project or any project up there, it's just always been one of those places. I, I just hope that someday, you know, which it will eventually is that the turf farm may not be there someday and, you know, it is probably inevitable that it won't. And then that road will be completely built out and it'll be a lot, a lot better road to travel.
I've heard turf farms are pretty good neighbors too.
Is that right, Kendall? Turf farms are good neighbors.
Turf farms are great neighbors. They really are.
I do appreciate, one of my, as I've tried to roll my thoughts in this and going out and seeing the property too. And I understand that there is some road issues and concerns there and but people in a hotel looking at RV stuff is like saying, going to the forest and looking at a lot of deer. I mean, they're here looking at the travel equipment that they're in more than likely. So I don't know if that's a valid concern. I do understand the representation of our city. But I do, as going back and reviewing what applicant has already done, Cross Street and Telegraph. I can't fault them for the way which they've maintained the property. I appreciate council bringing up ideas of what surfaces should be and all that. But I also struggle with us getting the advice and direction of council of in previous things where we said, okay, we can come here and say, okay, this place needs to tell us how much money has been associated with this loss and so forth. But then we said, no, we can't do that and coming into this and saying, well, enforcing things that we said is not appropriate in other places. The applicant has a right to develop the property and a part of me that's somewhat kind of okay with the concept of the RV parking and everything is its gravel. Gravel, I honestly think after being in landscaping and construction is just fine and it's drainage, but also it opens up for future development that we could do something with this. Obviously, concrete and asphalt can be torn up just as easily. But I, I don't fault that applicant for being fine with the gravel surface because they've proved they've been able to maintain what they've already done previously. As per one concern that I have going I've done a good job with what they have. The other thing that I, I do have a small concern with the concept of the high density housing in there is to have more of an amenity space for it's going to be a place for families. Maybe if there was a concession of doing something where we could probably do more or children and stuff is probably my concerns. I know we have that corner in there and it's, it, it may be just fine. But I cannot fault as to the RV place that they're proposing. I can't fault high density. I am kind of concerned about the elevations and how that's going to jive when we do the administrative and commercial area in there. It probably needs just a little bit more effort to just address, to make sure that the walls are taken care of, that these elevations aren't true and can work. But that's just, I'm more concerned with that little, just making sure the elevations match up the rest of it. I, I don't have an opposition to.
Yeah, as I was looking over the property, just, I was trying to think of a better place to put a, an RV park within, with, not an RV park, but a RV parking
RV storage.
Storage there within the city and I, maybe there's better places. I don't know.
Yeah, I wouldn't argue the place. I don't say your place is wrong. I just think that we need to make sure, and this is one of the things when, when the applicant came through with the PUD process. And I will remind you and him of what was asked of him is by going PUD, you invite the council to become part of your developer. And he said, I understand that and I agree to that. And so when you do that, then suddenly you get the council to come in and start weighing in on what this project is, unlike some of our other zoning processes that you alluded to. So to me, the important thing is, is protecting. I'm not saying that, that RV doesn't fit here. It certainly probably does. But what does it look like?
Well, I appreciate your response on that because my, my point in commenting was to hear some, hear some other thoughts on that. I, I do get a little bit. I get a little nervous and, and I realize this PUD process is, is changed and it's new for us. I get a little nervous when we start dictating the type of business, but I do, I appreciate your comments as far as what is it going to look like? Because I think that's where we should be focusing. What, what product, the, the 50 year? Because it might, it could be there for 50 years.
The other one's halfway there, so.
I think that's a much better way to be looking at this rather than telling a business owner how, how he should do his property and and I kind of specifically refer to the asphalt and the covered parking.
Is the wall, aesthetics of the wall, the type of trees, where are the trees going to be located? It's the aesthetics to me, I look and say, okay, yeah, it's RV storage, but look, I mean, it's, it's basically shielded. It's got a beautiful wall around it. It looks good from the exterior. We know what's on the interior and it's, it fits.
Yeah, I agree. But having it up on that slightly raised hill, a three to five feet in some places, I, I, I think it benefits that property and makes it driving by makes it look better. That doesn't change the, the view from up on the hill where those hotels would be, but.
But I think if you, if you put your right foliage around it, you still protect the beauty.
It'll look fine. One or two trees.
Beautiful trees down there.
Yeah, one or two trees.
You can see an RV underneath it, but it's like, look at the green.
Yeah, that could be a big, big change there. The amenities, so here's, the other thing I was thinking about is that area could really be quite congested with some really high density housing. And that, I don't know, maybe that's an upside for, for the parking. But I, I wonder, because that's one place where the council's been fairly consistent with the PUDs is, is requiring amenities and, and, and trying to break up some of that or giving, with that density, adding some, some things that would be beneficial there. I'd be interested to hear from the applicant.
Concern I had with the high density housing is simply because of the same issue that we have in current adjacent housing and that is the parking issues. That are spilling everywhere and we're, and we're setting ourselves up for the same process in the next ones here.
So and I'm hearing that there are some issues, parking, amenities, how we're going to deal with the elevation, what the landscaping is going to look like that might make it attractive even though it's, you know, full of RVs and stuff, but still could be attractive and and well landscaped and stuff. We just don't have enough information.
Like you say, I don't know if
I'm headed towards.
The applicant has that with him because that was some of the things that we asked him to bring back to us. I haven't seen anything through the last two weeks. Maybe he just was going to bring
It's not in our pack. It's, you know, maybe it's appropriate to table rather than
That, that's my initial feeling is exactly that. If there is anything to bring to the table right now, I would, I would rather table it while we address those issues rather than my personal feeling of not to approve it as it sets today. Rather than going to a denial, I would largely go to a table and say, let's see if we can work these things out. Hey, where's the wall? What's the wall look like? Where's our, we talked about dumpsters or trash receptacle issues that haven't been resolved. I mean, there's some issues here to me that still need to be fleshed out and resolved.
How many sites are there? How many homes? Apartments?
We have dwelling units. Then three commercial buildings.
Do we know what the commercial is going to be yet?
No, we don't. We know what the buildings are going to look like.
They're two story, right?
They're two story.
We've seen renderings of those. Just call it Cookie Monster and see what happens. Right?
How many dwelling units are there in the property that actually has built out that half of the road?
Either the ones to the north?
Yes.
The Bluffview Town Home project. I think there was a total of 170, 70 to 80 units in the Bluffview Town Home development.
There's, there's our left through what's the left and right. Where's our front elevation?
Yeah.
That's the fronts and then the backs. You can see what happens when it's built on blue clay.
Original state.
Then these are the elevations with the front. In the, our garages, they have covered parking, non-covered parking. Did you see a lot of those kind of developments throughout the city?
Okay.
Parking is going to be a huge issue.
Well, I guess if you have covered parking, that's one of the things we brought up before is you, you put in a garage and they fill it with toys. I guess you eliminate that by putting outside covered parking.
But usually with covered parking, you have one, one stall, one covered.
One covered, one non-covered. Now, they can cover more, but they generally don't just, you know, dollar reasons, I get it. Some of them have covered all of them. I mean, I've been to a couple of projects in probably St. George area that have covered all the, the whole thing because they wanted to make sure the people are coming to theirs versus somebody who doesn't. So I have been to some of them that's a 50 50 and others that are 100% covered. I'm not sure. We'll have Kendall come up and say how many bedrooms. I would imagine these are probably at least two, if not three, two and three. Okay.
Well, I guess my point on the covered parking is my point on the covered parking is one of our complaints has been that you put in a garage and they, it gets filled with toys. It doesn't be, it, it's counted as parking space, but it doesn't
But it's not.
And this keeps people from parking on the street because they're actually where people are parking, you know, it's a driveway. Right there, I mean, I mean, people could, it'd be very rude, which we do see that from time to time. But parking behind folks is, and they, and they may park behind if they come to their two units, they may just park out there, but
They do, they just park behind.
That's where, you know, it's private, then the HOA is going to have to keep that monitored. So hey, there's a lot of towing companies who would love to have a contract with you and they'll come get rid of those cars. You know, within a half hour, if you have a contract with them. In fact, many of them will drive your neighborhood looking if you have a contract and they'll get rid of them for you pretty fast. Because that's how they make their money.
Right.
I guess my final thoughts on this is that we, we did put out some ideas, some information that we did want to see when it came back to this. And I haven't seen those things that would make me feel more comfortable. And I think there are some very valid concerns. And I agree that there's, just to give you statistics, 90% of this, it feels good. But those last few things I feel like are necessary before we can really approve it. I, I, I'm feeling more in favor of a, a tabling, simply to get some more information rather than to a straight out approve or deny it because I feel like either one of those is kind of leaning away from just the details that will matter and making this a 50 year kind of approach to this, making sure these details are in place before we just approve everything. It's just one thought from me.
I, I'd like to have Kendall respond to it.
I was going to ask him if he even brought anything with him and at least give him a chance or what his thoughts are.
You got three minutes?
You have one second now, man. You better hurry.
Says one second.
It looks really cool. That's our use of technology in here is
Well, all I wish is I would have been put in head of that group before me, but couple of things I, so I misunderstood, maybe I understood what you wanted and that was going to be part of the, the plan. I guess maybe I, I didn't understand that it was going to be right at this meeting here. We, we, we haven't submitted the landscape plan. Haven't did a traffic study, some of these things that require.
Traffic study wouldn't be, but landscape plan means becomes an important part of those projects because we, when we approve it, that's what is approved.
Yeah.
And so the landscape plan becomes an important part of that. Your wall design becomes an important part of that. And maybe, yeah, the rest of it, I think the elevations become an important part of it. We have some trash receptacle discussions. I think that needs to be something discussed and decided on.
Yeah, okay. Well, like I said, I just completely misunderstood. I, I understand there's going to be another, if it was approved. Again, this is just a zone change. If it was going to be approved, all these things would be worked out. Okay? That, I, I understand the trash receptacle thing. I, I understand the trash receptacle thing, showing some things there. The wall, I can guarantee it's going to be a colored wall. It's not going to be your standard gray. It will be attractive. The landscape, I mean, obviously it has to be approved. We want it to make it look nice. The one down on Telegraph, obviously that was twenty six plus years ago. A whole different.
Different, different world.
Different things, different country. We live around here, Jeff. We, we want to make sure it, it looks nice as well.
But I will, as you're thinking about that, I will draw your attention back to the comments that a couple of the members of the council have made, which is the view area coming down the hill, looking into a mitigating. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I, we've had a ton of people here today. I mean, just before me, okay? I want to tell you, and this has been going on for almost two years, a year and a half. I have not had one person, well, exception for the planning commission meeting, a lady stood up during the public hearing part of it and was more concerned about the growth that was being passed and how she was having to deal with water restrictions, she thought. It was, it was voluntary, but she, she was wondering why. That is the only person that's ever stood up in opposition. I've had Dean Terry, I've talked with him. Dean Terry was here just the last public hearing. Owns a lot of commercial property up there. Him and Mr. Jackman right across the street. They were both there. They did not stay for this meeting. I have not had one person in opposition to anything that we're planning on doing. And I think that's important. We own the property for sixty plus years. I mean, we, we've been here, part of Washington. We'd like to make it nice. Like I said, if, if somebody was in opposition, I think they'd want to show up here. Well, I'm just addressing, Dean Terry, if he had any concerns about anything we've got going there.
As far as that goes, I just, you know, as I got up there and got looking and thinking about who's going to see this, that was one whom my mind went to is, hey, people stay in that motel looking out that window are going to see what's down through here. So I want them, I want it to be in a pleasing sight because that's, hey, Washington City is what I see and what I.
I understand.
And so that was, that was my only concern with it. Not to say that this didn't fit there, because I think it does. I think it's an appropriate use for there, but let's make sure that we, that we kind of, you know, we talked about Telegraph was what it was when you built it twenty five years ago. Let's, let's build this one to the next standard of today.
That's been my whole intent. In fact.
Fifty years from now, we're going to look at that and say, you know what? We did a pretty good project there.
What's interesting is we've, you go to the work meetings and, and you throw a plan out there, the department heads look it over, kind of give some red line stuff. We're, we're on the fourth revision. Again, I, I understand there's going to be more and that's kind of been the, the processes. We meet with the city council and if it's approved, then I mean, I've, I've got a list already of what fourteen conditions.
Well, that's, that's the challenge when you come through a PUD process is because you.
And I, and I don't have any problem with that.
You even hike yourself to that because now you've invited five more people to become developers.
Well, and, and that's why I'm trying to put out there, we're, we're workable, we're willing. The, the one thing that I, and I appreciate Council McLuff and Councilman Ward and their concern there, I to pave that, that amount of property would be roughly eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I don't, to me, to me, if you've got the appropriate landscaping and the wall and whatnot around that. Yeah, most of that stuff isn't going to be seen with that because the view shed's protected by, by landscaping.
I agree. I have a hard time arguing that as being.
If we're not going to have that there, then we need to protect this the other way and say, pave it off. You know, and so I guess that's the two balances I'm looking at and saying, you know what? To me, this is the better alternative is to say, let's landscape it right. And what's happening inside that wall becomes less of a, of a view or a problem with this. We don't have to worry about addressing that. Let's address it here rather than say, nope, we're going to address it in here and it's a lot more expense. So that's.
And, and I think where I feel more comfortable with that is seeing the track record of what you've already done. We, we already know what you do and, and we appreciate that because it gave me something to really compare against. And when I saw you maintain what you have, I kind of, it kind of became a moot point. I guess the overall thing is, I think maybe have some misunderstandings about some things we gave as a recommendation before we could say, okay, we feel good moving forward with this because this is the part where we vote and say, like that. And I think there's just a few little things that didn't get addressed that I would like to see addressed before we move to that next stage of agreeing what happens in here. And, but I think it's a beautiful process. I think it's a great amenity, a, a great addition to our city. And so I, I think it's got a lot of good going for it. And very, very few things that were just from the last.
The woman Granger's concern, I don't think it falls upon this developer, but it still is a concern. Is that road?
The road. I do agree, the road will become.
I mean, part of me starts to scratch their head and say, golly, it'd be nice if we could force, you know, developers are going to cause that problem to, to extend it because we, we then are left with the herb that happens to have the pitch point. But you're right, it doesn't fall upon this developer, but it is a concern.
I, you know, I, I mean, the council can change the zoning. That's not approving a preliminary plat. And what I'm hearing us talk about mostly is a preliminary plat.
Well, somewhat, but I don't know whether that is the case because.
You may not, you may not see a preliminary plat. My understanding is they're in a home mall, so there is a little subdivision.
Well, there's no plat coming.
This is it.
Layout, you're seeing the elevations. Amenities, that, that's, you know, I mean, all preliminary plat would show you is where policy set, relationship, the dimensions.
All right, so what, what the council's requesting is necessary for this step?
And that's what I'm getting at.
And it's a PUD zone. We're writing the zoning into this. And we do the PUD, that's why they never bring a class of PUD. I mean, if this was, wouldn't need to bring one in later. It's still a PUD, that's why they bring the, that's why they bring the plan in with the PUD. You block that in at that time. If you have no standard, that's the way.
That's what I didn't completely understand, so I apologize. I mean, I, I guess I'm still going off. I knew that there was going to be one more.
Yeah, what I'd like to propose is that we have a workshop that you can be a part of and let's, let's go over the details of the walls and the landscaping and and the trash receptacles and the parking and those issues that we've got there. And if we can hammer those out, obviously we move to the next meeting for, for the process.
And, and by workshop, you would mean that, that Kendall would come back with some drawings?
On a Tuesday night, on a Tuesday night, we throw them up on there and say, this is what my wall is going to look like. We say, we like that. And he's going to say, hey, this is the caliper tree I'm going to put in. I'm going to put in a three inch or four inch caliper tree. And they're going to put here and they're going to put them there and that's going to protect that view shed from here and there.
So when you make the motion to put this on the table, would you, would you table it with those particular things to be addressed at that time?
I just table it, it's a workshop meeting.
Okay.
So let me ask, when would be the next, so the next workshop?
Twenty days from now.
Are you going to be in town?
Should be.
Well, our, our decision would be made. We're going to a workshop, but then we would.
We have to go back into the public meeting process.
That's what I would do is table to our next, the next council meeting, which would be a, and then put it on workshop for Tuesday night. It's on the docket for the meeting for the next night for approval.
Correct.
We separately put on the agenda that Tuesday. We just know that, that also gets Kendall to know that here's what I got to work for, so I got to be talking to Drew about this, what I got to be, here's what I have to be bringing to Tuesday meeting.
Exactly.
So that Wednesday continued meeting from here, that would make sense anyway. Yeah, yeah, so I, I mean, we need, we need exhibits into you on that Thursday.
Yes.
Prior to.
Two weeks from tomorrow, good man.
Or even if it's, even if it's pictures that are out there, you know, if we, you got a picture of a nice wall somewhere, said, this is the wall I'm proposing.
This is what we want it to look like.
You know, you may not even have to enlist Mr. Pope.
Yeah, even if we get some exhibits and even if you change them a little bit, at least give them a couple days to kind of be prepared what they're seeing. If you have to alter them a little bit, you can't still work out.
No, it's, yeah, you're like. Mark where you see the trash receptacles would go.
And that's where we make sausage together.
So you need me to bring the meat then? Is that what you're?
What's that?
You want me to bring the meat? Or the pig, I mean?
You decide which, we'll bring the other.
Yeah, no, I, I've got all those conditions, yeah.
About buying, again, the dumpsters.
Where they're going to go. The elevation.
See the wall.
The wall.
Design. They want to see the elevation change on the street.
Right in there.
Are you guys okay with this elevation on this building? Or is there something you want to just jutter? I'm just kidding. You can't go immediately with that thing.
That's okay. And those were my main things. I don't, I, I feel good.
If there were tree placements that could help the, the view corridor there, that would be really helpful to.
Yeah, if we have gravel, then we want more landscape disguises.
Kind of break it up.
Color, a little grass.
Get it off the ground.
And a road.
I, there's a million dollars. You got, city's got a million dollars. We'll build it today.
Government does everything these days.
I'll do all the work and you guys just pay for the asphalt.
Thank you so much for being willing.
If you don't have to put it there, maybe you could put it in there.
Mr. Turner, I'd just like to say from my point of view, thank you for being willing for, to hear us on the concerns because we feel like you, you guys have done a lot for our city and we do appreciate what you're trying to do and a lot of levels within this project. We appreciate your scrutiny, the scrutiny you've put yourself to with us. And we appreciate you being willing to jump with these things with this in mind. I really look forward to seeing how we can move this forward because I think you have a really good concept, from my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kendall. Sorry to make you wait.
Make a motion at this moment? Jeez, I'm afraid I'm going to butcher this, but I'm going to give it a shot, okay? Mayor, if that's okay, I'd like to make a motion that we table consideration to approve ordinance for zone change request C dash eighteen dash fourteen to change zoning designation from RA dash two residential agriculture, two lot, two acre lots to PUDR and PUDC, plan unit development residential and commercial located approximately six hundred north, eleven hundred east with the condition of opening up an opportunity for the developer to come to our next workshop and on November, on November thirteenth. Is that correct?
The workshop.
The workshop.
We're actually tabling it to the November fourteenth.
To the naval, November fourteenth, at that time, which we can discuss new renovations as requested tonight with the council and the developer.
If, if he can't get everything prepared for the thirteenth, maybe we should just table it until the next council meeting after the workshop.
One thing we could like to do.
He feels confident he can be ready.
The public knows that when you guys tabled it, you tabled it something specific. Even if you had a table.
Table to a date.
Ready. We don't want the public to think, despite the fact that nobody came and contested. You know, the first time you do that, they do show up, so.
So we can't put a, until we feel better about a table?
Yeah, until. Until we decide to take.
Until we say, untable it?
Until we decide we want to vote and can't get off and vote it.
So what is the date that I'm motioning then?
Fourteenth.
On the fourteenth of November at that time.
I'll second his motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Four die.
Plus five.
Granger, I.
Her a die.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Kendall.
Thank you, Kendall.
Okay, well.
You're a part of the process.
All right, all right. Move along. Thanks.
All right. Item nine, bid awards, consideration to award a bid for the Virgin River Stream Restoration Project.
Forward to this one.
Thank you, Mayor.
That sounds huge.
I will promise you I'll keep this under an hour.
Anyone need to go buy a hamburger buns? There's a grocery.
October, October sixteenth, we open bids for this project. We have seven contractors bid the project. You have the bid tabulation in your packet. So staff is recommending that we award Schedule A to Feller Enterprises at a price of four hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred dollars. And we'll schedule B to rebound excavation for three hundred and sixty three thousand, two hundred and ninety eight dollars and seven cents.
Wow, can you tell me more about the scope of this particular project?
It is a debris removal project. One of them is down by the Confluence, the Mill Creek Generation Station, St. George's.
Is it, would it be possible to, to show us?
Yeah, I would really like to see it. Can you take us there? Is that how you say it? It's almost like a Beam Me Up Scotty moment. I do like that. It is. It's a decent high mark. Is it? Can, can you take me there? I'd be like printed right here.
Is he on stock in Google Maps?
Wow, that's an amazing resolution. I like that company.
It's like, there's another hit, there's another hit.
Only within Bitcoin.
Oh, it's amazing. On Wednesday nights, the hits just are amazing.
Oh, wow.
So the bid Schedule A is this Oxbow area.
Basically this area, right? With all the sediment to build up, take it down to the, the ordinary high water mark, that is construction. This area.
Away from the homes.
Originally, we went back ten years ago to the river. So if they revegetate, they move into sediment, try to get the river, can't move the river, but try to make it so.
We can encourage.
You said de-vegetating, not re-vegetate, re-vegetate. So how does that work?
Willows.
We had flooding down there, so at the issue.
Yeah, it's just pushed, the river's pushing towards the housing down there. It, it wasn't there ten years ago. This is money we got from FEMA. It's a seventy five, I believe, a seventy five, twenty five, twenty five percent match. The twenty five percent match is coming from the Flood Control Authority. So.
So what is, what is Washington actually paying for?
We pay into the Flood Control Authority. That's kind of one of the reasons, this is one of the beauties of being part of the Flood Control Authority and funding projects. So it's, you know, it's, it's part of the Virgin River. It's, you know, the restoration of the Virgin River. It's getting rid of the invasive species in the river, the tamraks.
Jeez, the latest one.
Shifted and went back to the side and the big flood two years ago and she came back.
Can you, would you mind zooming out just a little bit? I was busy as you were pulling that in, being made fun of.
So this is, this is part of View Estates. Thirty fifty south comes down the shore, you make the bend.
Your office, Doug, is, your office, Doug, is just right up there.
Shows you how old that photo is. It doesn't have our plenty of park down there in it. Where?
Oh, I got like with you, I thought it was in that larger part. Yeah.
I thought our park was greener than that. Where's our parks department at? Oh, okay. Bermuda grass.
Brutal. Okay, so that whole Oxbow area is the first section.
Yes. The next section is there. This is Schedule B. This is the countryway, bridge over the river. It's this section right here.
So how, and how far will they go with that?
Uh, basically they'll come here, through the sediment, try to get the river back over this side a little bit. The river actually splits.
Yeah, right there.
Part of it coming this way, part of it's coming this way. Try to get those back together. This sediment, the local out of here is actually going to use it for the load. Perhaps landfill, curb, sub, ready to load.
Oh, interesting. So how much sediment removal are they doing on the other section? Is it the same thing? You don't have to pull it back out. Is it, is it sediment removal there as well?
Yes, they're both sediment removal project, re-vegetation project. It's basically the exact same word. Just more yardage than the other project.
Are you going to take that soil too?
No, we won't even use all of this. Part of the bid is, is the contractors, I think contractors are going to.
Relocate it.
They'll dispose of it.
They'll dispose.
Relocate it.
They'll, they'll use it as shield with somewhere else and probably get on that end. That's why it's keeping.
I, I need to go skimboard down through there and acquaint myself.
Hey, another thing within the scope of this, did they give a variety of plants that are being revegetated?
They'll just be willows.
Just willows, so no types of.
That's the only thing they were really allowed to plant down in the.
So no ash varieties, eagle leaf ash or any type of.
Any caliper tree that grows down in there, anything that gets over, I believe it's two inch caliper, we're supposed to remove. That's in the ordinary, below the ordinary. It does. It creates a snag and will stop.
So the willows, you just allow the flats to kick over and come back up?
They'll bend over, they'll come back up. On the outer ends of it, then that's where we do want to get the trees.
And that's what I was wondering, at what point would you transition into more of the tree canopy kind of thing?
Pretty much the edges, when you start coming up.
But that's honestly part of this process?
No, because we won't even be getting in that.
Do they, do they even re-vegetate as part of the project or are they just the removal process?
No, they'll re-vegetate.
So they'll re-vegetate.
Okay, thank you, I, I appreciate this, I like to see things as natural as we can.
Flycatcher down there will get that much more habitat.
Yeah, no, that's the thing, flycatcher doesn't like the willows.
This, this is kind of, we have to get this when we're out of the spawning season for the fish and.
Breeding of fishes passing by.
It's a great project where we can, we can leverage our money. If, if we're trying to do this on our own and trying to get this FEMA money, it's a little bit more difficult for us to get it. Whereas the Flood Control Authority, if we're leveraging the money, it makes it much, much easier.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, I appreciate answering any questions. I'm excited, I look forward to seeing, one thing, when I think of how we've been using our relationship with the flood control, I've been told, can you verify this with me, that the flood control only applies where there is a watershed that connects to the Virgin River that is shared by two or more cities?
Correct.
And one thing that I've asked to be brought up on that is that our Mill Creek is one of those places that is currently not in the flood control. How do we petition to become a part of that?
Mill Creek, Mill Creek doesn't enter into another city.
It is boarding right with St. George. Yes, it is, on the Sandburgs property.
Yeah, well, there's a discharge that comes out of, so a diversion off of Mill Creek that, that dumps into the Sandburg.
Sandburg, yeah.
But the creek itself is all within Washington City.
The creek itself isn't at the boundary line itself? Because that's what I was looking at the vert, when I'm looking down on it, the creek is the boundary line in a given spot.
Possibly could be.
It is.
I mean, it is, it's kind of, it is, it's.
The reason why is because we have some significant things that if we're able to pull into that funding and benefit our city more, because we've had fires in that area, we have lots of unique things, we have a lot of invasive species and I can see some benefits pulled into our city if we're able to petition for that, because it does meet the requirements.
One of the issues is it'll bring a whole lot of other drainage in to get funding, especially a lot of St. George drainage is in.
Well, if it is two cities, it is two cities.
We did look at it and it didn't fall within our guidelines for that.
I like to talk about it later, I know that's not part of this right now, so, but it was just one of the things that was on my mind as I was considering the fire that happened last year. If this is something within that, I'd like to make sure that it is or is not for sure. So, thank you.
Are you ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, bid schedule A for the Virgin River Stream Restoration Project to go to Feller Enterprises for the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred dollars and B schedule B to award to Red, redoubt excavation for three hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seven cents.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Eric eye.
Granger eye.
Cluff eye. Ward eye.
Alright, thank you, that's approved.
Is it making you nervous when they come in with those bids like that, where they're so high? I mean, that's kind of a, some of those are just go away bids, they're like, well, we'll do it, but only if we have to.
Well, it's because our, our bidding climate right now. Contractors aren't busy.
They're making a lot of money.
They're gonna be high bids. If they get it at the high grade, they'll bring more people in or. So.
That's what it is.
It's a scary bidding climate right now.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm very, very happy with these bids.
Are you?
Yes.
Came in where you wanted, good.
I demand twenty ten, twenty eleven, when it comes up, this is great.
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, I am ten. Consideration to approve the sale of surplus vehicles.
Thank you Eric, counsel. So, we're actually gonna probably do several sales this year because we, we will have a fair amount of surpluses here. So in your packet, you have the list of vehicles that we're surplusing out this year. We have our minimum bid price, we set this up as a sealed bid. People can come in, they can look at the vehicles, vehicles we have up for sale. They submit a sealed bid in a sealed envelope, a republic real notes and whoever is the high bid on that will receive the vehicle. The one piece of equipment on the very bottom of the page, we have our old paver that we're selling. Our trade-in value of that was eighteen thousand dollars and Santa Clara would like to purchase that for that price. So we do have the opportunity that we can sell to another entity without bidding it out. So, we would like to go ahead and allow Santa Clara to purchase that.
I don't know, I, I think on our last flood on Main Street, it was so good to see them, their trucks trying to help us clean up. We have such a good relationship with our cities, if we have something that's within the legality to help out another city, I, I'm glad that they reached out and needed it.
We swap equipment back and forth all the time, they've actually used our old paver quite a bit, so.
I say we go up to nineteen.
Is that the downside of putting it to bid? I mean, they, they would likely be the only ones to bid on it.
No, what, if, if, if they didn't want it, I would probably send it down to the equipment auction. We probably could get more money if we took it to the auction.
I, I guess, I think in valuing the.
But we also at the auction, we take the chance of giving less money.
Yeah. I think it's fair, if, if we're getting what is the appraised value for it, I, I see no reason supporting it.
It's not the appraised value, it's just the trade-in value.
Trade-in value, the, the value.
Sometimes it's similar. Yeah.
Yeah, it's pretty common, a lot of cities probably we did a fine benefit, fire trucks.
Yeah.
Well, also trade-in, the trade-in value they give us is pretty much what they figure they could take to auction for.
Alright.
Need approval on that one, or is there any other ones?
Yes.
Do you want to go the whole package deal first?
Well, yeah.
All together?
So, so do the Dodge Chargers come with the street, the, the police lights and everything?
Nope, they're all stripped, other than the cars are black and white, but they're completely stripped out. Yes, escort vehicles. I actually, I, I actually, they have a company that would like to purchase them for bug sprays.
Dodge Chargers? The Dodge Chargers?
Yes.
Oh my.
They wanna put bug patrol on them.
Okay.
Is that the Weber County mosquito abatement or something?
I might have crazy.
Uh, the one, the one truck in there, the very top one, the, the two thousand and eighteen, those are the vehicles that we purchase annually and we sell them every year. That is what we paid for that truck, that's where we always set minimum bid price at.
What is that, what is that actually worth right now? Do you know?
The, uh, trade-in value is fifty-two. So, it's a good buy. Last year, the trucks went for about five thousand more than our minimum bid.
Yeah.
Ready for a motion?
I am ready for a motion. I'm moving approval of the, um, sale through the bid process of the trucks as listed, with the exception of one, which will go for the, uh, resale value to Santa Clara.
Second?
Can I have a motion and a second?
Ward eye. Cluff eye.
Granger eye.
Eric eye.
Alright, thank you, anything to report from your assigned committees?
Mayor, just a quick report from our Washington Youth Council, they've been busy as always. One thing I'd like to just open up is our youth council is going through a mentoring process right now, in which they'll be reaching out to city councilmen and mayors. And the feedback from the youth so far has been very high, they've been very excited to, uh, get a better idea of how the government works and what I've appreciated is they've come back and actually started to do more things that are community minded. They, in a lot of ways, actually is kind of a pageantry arm of our city to go out and say, this is the beauty of our youth, they're great kids, but they are also very active and good service projects and, and they have great ideas and want to serve in the community, so I appreciate that. I, I know that I reached out to, uh, Roger Carter here on the Covington front door, did we ever figure that thing out? I saw that he had taken out the deadbolt. It, when you're trying to work on a Covington old block, it's not one of those fast processes that happens. But I'd have to say the amenities to meet there, we appreciate those who've done that. Carmen wanted to pass on her appreciations for people working on that, from patching the stucco where the roof had been, uh, not the plaster and stuff. There's been so much work done on that and, and they're so excited. So, that's just something that she wanted to pass on and appreciated that and everything that we've done to just make that a nice, functional part of our city. So, that's all I have this time.
Thank you, anybody else? We did end up donating fifty-five cases of canned goods to Switchpoint yesterday after our mayor's event, so I thought that was excellent. That was a lot of fun to do and be a part of and, uh, I got pretty emotional when I brought that stuff over because he, the other food bank truck hadn't showed up yet, they were supposed to show up that morning and he brought, he brought the families back that he had to turn away, so it was a lot of fun, that was, that's pretty cool. Uh, we'll move on to the city manager report.
Okay, just a couple of items I'll just hit on. Our Main Street flood project, we're working on some of the final design on the rebasing up there and working with SITL on land acquisition, of course, so I'll just keep you updated on that. Uh, Washington Parkway, the extension up to Greensprings, have that bid out in April. So that's kind of a long way out, the roads department's working on identifying some of the spring road projects. Active Transportation Committee, you all aware of that, they do still meet on occasions and they looked at, uh, to talk about some striping projects, correct Mike?
Right.
That's great, so that plan, some of the plan is starting to, you know, move forward and be implemented. The last thing I'm gonna talk about here, I need you to follow me on this, um, so, I hope I explained it correctly. So one of the things in Mike's budget this year was a paver. And in working on the lease purchase agreement with Zion's Bank to, to get the funds to do that, the paver essentially is about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. If we borrow a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, our interest rate is four point three percent, that's pretty common. The interest rate, by the way, just in the last couple of weeks, ticked up forty basis points, so that's why I'm bringing this also to you tonight. We hit a interest rate, um, I don't know what the word is, a gap at two hundred thousand. And if you, if you borrow two hundred thousand versus a hundred and seventy-five thousand, the interest rate goes to three point seven six. Okay, so the question we asked was, Mike, do you have anything additional that is a need there? And one of the things that they have had a need of is a roller, utility compact. Big heavy thing, roll the ground, right? Asphalt, yeah. So the thing we looked at is if we were to take, if we were to borrow two hundred thousand dollars, it's actually two oh one. If we were to borrow two hundred and one thousand dollars at the three point seven six interest rate versus the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars at the four point three percent interest rate, what is the total expenditure on interest?
For how many years?
For five years, which is typically the, typically the extent on these type of vehicles. So the bottom line is, if we borrowed two hundred thousand, we would be paying three hundred and eighty-one dollars less in interest than if we borrowed a hundred and seventy-five thousand because of the interest rate difference, so you're with me so far, right? Okay. So there's a hundred and, three hundred and eighty-one dollars cheaper.
Proposal I give to my wife. If we buy two cars instead of one car.
And if you can make the interest rate work, it works. So there's a three hundred and eighty-one, we'd be paying out three hundred and eighty-one dollars less in interest over the term of five years for borrowing two hundred versus a hundred and seventy-five because of the change in interest rate. Okay? And, um, so essentially what Mike could be doing is taking this additional twenty-five thousand dollars for five years at no cost. Now, he didn't know exactly how he was gonna fund his compactor, it, by the way, and this is the reason we're talking about it, it is not in this year's budget, but I would like to make a recommendation here in a minute. I mean, it's possible in the future we could cash flow it, but that would tie our own money up. Now, the compactor itself, this is where I don't want to lose you, is more than twenty-five thousand, okay? It's be enough, it's thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven, oh yeah, because it's borrowing two oh one. So that's an additional sixteen thousand dollars. Okay, so I gave you the numbers of we just borrowed the two oh one. Now, we're gonna check to see if, what, what the interest rate would be at, uh, if they just allow us to, to, to extend it up the additional sixteen. I've done it, if, if that's, if the interest rates can be the same, which I suspect it will be, the total interest we'll be paying out for that, um, thirty-six, thirty-seven thousand dollars is eleven hundred and ninety-seven dollars over the term of the five years, once you net out the three eighty-one. So, my recommendation would be that if the council would give us approval to move that direction, we would still, and then we'd have to get it ratified in a budget opening with the council later on. But the reason I even asked the council to consider it this time is because as we sit here, we continue to watch the interest rate.
Ab is, how often is interest rate compounded? Is this yearly, monthly, semiannually?
It's compounded annually, I believe, on this. And I'm giving you the all-inclusive true interest costs. So, you know, there's a, there's an average coupon cost and that, but then we throw everything in and we just give you, you're looking at true interest costs, I, all, all in. And it's not much more, but it does adjust it.
Because it seems like most of the time that'd be a monthly cost, I was just verifying before my calculations were off.
Yeah, it's a little different with the lease purchases on government issues. And, because quite frankly, we really only pay twice, we pay twice a year is all. We don't do monthly payments typically. Most of our payments in the city will either be annual payments or something.
Well, it's not so much the payment as it's how many times it's compounded.
Yeah, and they, but they, they kind of coordinate with those, with that program.
But we'd save interest costs if we paid monthly.
Maybe, not, not always.
Yeah, not necessarily, and, and I, yeah, I don't, I don't, they don't give us a monthly option on these things. These are semi-anually, you pay the interest one time a year, you pay the principal, you pay interest and principal one time a year and principal one time a year. So the principal's split in two.
Right.
And your interest is accrued on the annual one time a year.
That's good to know.
That's pretty common.
Just for your information, council, in the budget approved two hundred and forty thousand for the purchase of the paver. It came in at a hundred and seventy-five.
So we're still under where we were doing it?
Yeah, so we also in the budget, we actually had that full amount coming out of the, the street fund. We want to do the lease purchase on this just to try to keep more money in the maintenance fund through the years.
So we were gonna open this up for budget, we're not asking for more money, we're just gonna shift this around to where.
That's right, we'd wanna identify.
You wanna buy not only the paver, but the paver and the roller and the remaining money goes back into the fund.
But we're asking to pay interest where we were not gonna pay interest.
Just pay it out.
Pay it out of the fund, but.
Well, you weren't gonna cash flow the paper.
Well, we got, in, in the budget, it kind of got confused. So the budget actually shows that my sewer cleaner that's in this year's budget was actually paying cash for that out of the sewer fund. And we were gonna always do the loan on the paver. It kind of got flip-flopped in the budget, it shows that we were gonna do the lease purchase on the sewer cleaner and outright purchase the paver.
So, but, but you're correct, that's a good point though, councilwoman, so, you know, Mike's giving you the cost, the, the, the cost of the paper, but there would have been an interest included in that as well.
I want to suggest if we, if we had that, we created, can we pay it off faster if we choose to?
Yeah, lease purchases are usually not like bonds. Bonds you usually are pretty restricted on when you can do it.
No penalty, we pay it.
Usually there's, there's not, we'll double check that, but usually there's not on lease purchases. Lease purchases just work kind of like, uh, auto loans and that, but at a much better useful price and they usually are a higher interest rate though as well.
Well, they are getting more interest if they're making us pay yearly or semi-yearly. They're getting interest for months that we could make monthly savings, save interest.
So you're getting two for, two, two bangs for your buck for the, that's like me, I just went and bought a weed eater and I got a blower as part of that.
It's not exactly.
With it, so, yeah, it was exactly like that.
It's, it's like that, but not at all.
And, and it is, it's a used roller, it's not a brand new one, it's only one year old and only has three hundred and fifty hours on it. It's Mike brand spanking new and we're getting it for about ten thousand off.
Yeah, I have no question.
Mike, how often, I assume we use those rollers, like every time we do a repair in the roadway, a patch?
We do.
So that roller is something that we use quite often.
Quite often.
Now the paver, probably a little less often?
Little less often, we actually. We actually received the paver yesterday and we used it today, cause we had a big section that came apart when the water line came apart up in Greensprings, so.
Yeah, what happened?
We, it, twelve inch line split.
Brand new?
Hmm, not, it's probably ten years old. But it was laid on some rocks, so it split the length of pipe, which is, we have that, I shouldn't say common, probably at least once a year.
We, we had compact.
We, uh, we actually have two, uh, two, two rollers now, but they're smaller, so when you're, when we're using the paver, they're too small for the paper. It wouldn't have worked on that.
So the small rollers work your patches, most of your road patches, your smaller rollers work them.
Yes, so we have one roller that we don't, very rarely use. The Parks Department uses it for rolling their, their saw, their fields. The roller that we use all the time, it's a rubber tire rear, metal drum front. It's a good all-around roller, but not a really good one for when you're actually doing larger amounts. We needed a heavy roller, heavier roller with steel drums front and rear.
Can I finish just up there?
Uh, yeah, we are, it's, I mean, it's not the asphalt, it's the, it's the, yeah, the field material that went back here and then trying to get out of that load.
So do we need to, uh, approve that?
Uh, no, but if, if, if council's okay with it, then of course we proceed, cause we got it from this up in Zion's Bank and then we'll proceed in the next question.
I don't have a problem with moving forward.
Any questions?
I've never seen Mike ask for something to be admitted.
Okay, well, if there's no other discussions, I have nothing else to say. So, all right, is this for?
Wait, let's, let's take this moment.
I went on this and I was looking for, you have to say the thing to approve stuff.